All right. Good eve-- or good afternoon, everyone. I'm too used to saying good evening. Welcome to the Treasure Island Board of Commissioners' special meeting for Friday, April 19th. It is 2:37 PM and we'll call our meeting to order. And if everyone can please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Toth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dr.
Here.
Commissioner Minin.
Here.
Commissioner Dickey.
Here.
Mayor Payne.
Here. All right. And we'll take public comments for any agenda items. We do only have one item on the agenda today. Seeing no public comments, we'll move right into our items of business. So the purpose of this special meeting is to discuss candidate evaluation for our city manager semifinalist selection. So I'll turn it over to our city staff or Doug, whoever wants to take it away.
Go for it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. I appreciate everybody can hear me, I hope, at this stage.
I think you need to do to make sure that you can hear yourself in the room because at home, if you can't, then they can't hear you well either.
I'll defer.
I think you just need one of those mics, right? Or does he need to speak into both of them?
This one's live, okay. Gotcha. We'll move this one off. Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
You're good with the sound check that you're in? Excellent. Great. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Well, for-- I know I have not had a chance to meet all of you, but some of-- in person, but certainly I want to introduce myself. My name is Doug Thomas. I am an agent with Strategic Government Resources. We are the firm that was engaged by the city a little while back to start to assist in working with you and your staff and you as elected officials in the recruitment and ultimately selection of your successor city manager. So it's a pleasure to be back in Treasure Island. It's a beautiful day, as it always seems to be here. Chamber of Commerce weather. And congratulations on being in your new city hall as well. Last time I was here, it was still in a state of construction, getting close. So Gary tells me that most of the bugs are being worked its way through at this stage of the game. So congratulations on that relocation as well.
Thank you.
So the purpose of today's effort is to bring you up to speed since I was last here to talk about how we conducted the search, the review of the candidates and the demographics of your candidate pool that applied for the position. But the meat of today's agenda will be going through a review of candidates that we feel are highly qualified for your consideration as semifinalists. And so as we work our way through that, I'll outline a process that I think generally with most of my communities works pretty easily to help you kind of get to a smaller number as we work our way forward. But with that, let me just kind of walk you through a PowerPoint presentation here so you get an idea of where we're at. So as I said, first and foremost, I'm going to highlight what we did to market the position and give you some background about the candidates that have applied, the demographics of that. Then I'm going to go through a list of candidates that I think that we believe in looking at the material that you put together or that you've approved in your position profile brochure in which you've talked about the academic credentials, experience, size, types of projects, things of that nature that would be important. And we've tried to use that as our lens because that's what you told us you're looking for as well. So with that, we've narrowed that list down to a smaller number of candidates. However, you've all received-- last week, I believe it was, we had sent a complete list of all the candidates that have applied. So you've also had a chance to look at their cover letters and resumes and things of that nature. So what I'm going to do is go through the list that I've got or what feedback we've received from the city as a result of your review of that. But before we ultimately get to a point of selecting semifinalists, I'm going to ask, is there anybody that maybe I haven't identified in this presentation that any of you might have seen in that background material that you might want to discuss? And we can bring up those candidates as well and bring them into the equation. From that point, we are going to be basically working through a process to help you get ideally around eight to 12 folks that you want to learn more about as semifinalists. And I've mentioned to Gary just before the meeting that sometimes this seems like it's harder than it needs to be, but I recognize that. I do a lot of it, so it's easier for me to get to that list. But you don't know a lot about everybody at this stage of the game. So sometimes it's kind of hard to get a handle on, and that's okay. That's the nature of where we're at. I'll describe what-- how we're going to work our way down to ultimately your finalists. But I recognize there's always a bit of uncertainty about this. And all you're trying to do at this stage is to say, this is somebody I'm interested in, I'd like to learn a little bit more about because at the next stage, we're going to learn a whole lot more detail about their style, their experience, how they're going to bring things to their-- what their background experience will be relative to your opportunities and your challenges here. We're going to hear about why they left their previous positions, any controversies they're involved with in their words, and we'll also have a chance to kind of unpack that as well. So I just recognize, I know this feels a little bit like you're on sand that's shifting below your feet, but we'll-- trust me, we'll help you get you through that. After we've gone through that, and as I say, the goal is to get somewhere between eight to 12 folks that you want to learn more about, I'm just going to highlight kind of what's coming next, what those semifinalists are going to be asked to do. And I'll start to also outline some things about what your-- as we work with your staff about what the finalists will then go through, but then also what your onsite interview will be. Not looking for decisions on all those factors today, I just-- every time I meet with you, I want you to kind of be thinking about what's coming next and what I'm going to be asking you to do at the next level as well. And then lastly, we're just going to make sure that we've got everybody on the same schedule with their timelines and the calendars and the dates for the interviews and the dates for our subsequent meetings that will take place as well. So with that in case, I described the process that you're about to step into as a triage. And the triage is really very much like a funnel. We're at the top of that funnel. So right now, we know a little about a lot of people. Everybody's applied. Now, some of these people, I'm going to be able to tell you I know more about because I know them either personally, professionally, or maybe they've been in another one of our searches where maybe they were a semifinalist or finalist. So in that case, I've got a little more intel on some of those folks than others. But the bottom line is, for the most part, you're going to be at the top of the funnel when you just know a little about what they've told us about themselves. And now we're trying to make an assessment of what that looks like. As I said, the next step of the equation, when you narrow this down and you select your semifinalist, we're going to start with the analogy of kind of peeling the onion skins off. You're going to get into a much deeper understanding of their background, their experience, their skill sets, their challenges, whatever controversies they're involved with, the types of things that they would like to see in a salary and benefit package, although I've got some high level information about that, and questions that they may have for you in the process. And at that point, we're also going to have some video interviews and you'll have a chance to see how they present themselves and react to some certain questions as well. And then, as I said, we'll start to also pull some additional media material on these candidates. So at that stage, now you're starting to peel those onion skin levels off, and you're going to learn a lot more about them. And that's the nature of it. You're at the top, the next level, you're going to learn a whole lot more about those eight to 12 folks. And then, even though the candidates may think they're done, they're not quite finished at that stage of the game. There's some additional work we ask them to do. When we come back, you will select ultimately out of that eight to 12 folks, typically somewhere between three to five folks that you would like to interview and bring in for an onsite interview process. And at that point, that's when we start investing some additional dollars and resources in this budget to do criminal history, credit, background, verification of their education, verification of any credentials they may have, if they're involved in illegal lawsuits, anything of that nature, driver's license checks, criminal records, all those sort of things are done. We also then undertake a 360 evaluation process for their references, supervisors, subordinates, peers, so we can kind of get a better understanding of what that looks like. And we'll ask those candidates also to do some additional work to prepare for the interview as part of the onsite interviews. Then we also do a second level of detailed work called a Stage Two Media Search, where we actually have several people on our staff that actually review wherever your finalists have lived and worked as an adult, so we impact whatever information would be in their social media, their newspaper articles, TV articles, whatever that may be. And many of these folks that have been in city management for a while, and Gary will appreciate this, we have a long list of things because we're always in the news as city managers. Sometimes it's about what happened in the meeting before, or a dedication of a dog park or the budget or whatever it would be. But oftentimes, it will also identify maybe a community was going through a controversy. And you can start to see how the manager or your candidate reacted in those circumstances. So we'll flag those, the things that were controversial as findings, but the rest of it is basically the normal run of the mill, but you'll have all that information. We know that at the end of the day, all your residents and your media and everyone else is going to Google and do all the research on these candidates. So our goal is to make sure we get that information to you so you're not caught by surprise at that stage as well from there. So as I say, we're at the top of the funnel. We're going to learn a little bit more, and then by the time we get to the end, that's when you really are going to spend all your time and resources on those candidates that you think are most closely matched. So in terms of the marketing of this position, I will tell you, as somebody that's got well over 35 years in city management and close to nine years now with SGR, the recruitment world today is a whole lot different than it was as recently as four or five years ago. Post-COVID, all of us aging baby boomers that have moved out of the active life of full-time employment has created kind of a vacuum. And when you look at the demographics of the number of people that are retiring, especially in the public sector arena, and you look at the number of people who are eligible to kind of step into those roles, there's a big gap. Many of the baby boomers stayed longer through the Great Recession and through COVID and everything else, and now they're saying, I finally mean it, we're done. And the other challenge is that there are a lot of folks that are-- it used to be that people would aspire, when you were an assistant city manager or department head, you always aspired to be the city manager. That is not the case anymore. A lot of people look at that position as the tip of the spear, and I'm told by many folks, including my former deputy and assistant managers, that the best job I've ever had was the assistant manager because I didn't have the spears in my back coming at it. So those are some dynamics that created some interesting challenges in the recruitment world. Despite that case, we have a pretty good outreach with folks in the public sector. And you can see in this effort, we advertised this position through our own social media and marketing components and our own website, close to 34 days. A good portion for about a week, it showed up as the top of the banner, so it captures a lot of attention. Whoever's looking at our job board site would be able to see the Treasure Island position. We, as I say, have a very aggressive social media marketing component, so we advertised and promoted the position on LinkedIn and Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, all those formats as well. And then above and beyond that, we have folks that, because we're one of the largest public sector executive recruitment firms in the country, we have people that actually subscribe for job blast alerts in the city and county manager positions. So those folks actually received, those that subscribe to that, close to almost, close to 7,000 folks, so we're getting blast about this opportunity as well. So we get a lot of exposure there. And then you authorize us to place ads in state, national, and various trade associations. And then above and beyond that, we have at any given time probably close to 100 searches going on, and we have thousands of candidates in our system. We go back and look at comparable type communities to what you're facing here, size, geographic or landscape, whatever that looks like. And we send out information to the candidates that were maybe top-tier candidates in some other searches that might be interested in this opportunity because at the end of the day, only one person gets hired, but that doesn't mean there's not a lot of great quality candidates that are close in the pool. So the outreach was very strong, and quite frankly, I'm running-- I was running three searches here in Florida, and you were in the middle of the sizes in that area in terms of population, but you actually attracted more than the other two candidate pools. So congratulations, I think that speaks well for your community. As you can see, we had a total of 61 candidates that ultimately applied for this position. I was very pleased with the number. We-- a lot of people reached out and contacted us about this opportunity. I flagged there because I'm giving you the demographic of the total pool. We did have a couple candidates that have withdrawn, they've accepted other positions or things have changed in their community and they decided they just want to pursue another opportunity now. So the demographics I'm giving you now is with everybody that has applied, including the two that ultimately withdrew. As you can see, most of those candidates come from the state of Florida. That is not a surprise. Almost all the searches we do, the whole state will generally generate most of the searches for natural reasons, but also Florida is one of the top three states in terms of council manager forms of government. California, Texas, and Florida are top three. So you always get a lot when you advertise in Florida. But you can see, a pretty broad perspective, basically across the country, including two individuals, one individual from Canada and one individual from India. So when I said we cast a wide net, we didn't necessarily advertise internationally, but people do find our websites and our outreach and the positions there. The demographic pool, as you can see from this sheet, out of the 61, largely male, more so than usual. We're seeing an increase in the number of female candidates, one of the reasons we really do try to market to non-traditional candidates and females in particular. About a third of our searches have resulted in a female being selected in the city manager role. So we expected to get a little bit more on this one, we're just-- we're not for whatever reason. And then you can see the demographic mix of the candidate pool that went through the process as well. So as I mentioned at the beginning, our process is basically looking at what you've told us is important in your position profile brochure and evaluating and using our skill, that is a lens, and then our skill as a recruiter and someone that understands city management to help narrow this pool down. But we're not going to know everybody, so we're going to have to make some assumptions about some folks. And so we're not going to always know these candidates and their style and their philosophical approach is the problem. We'll learn more about that at the next level. So the evaluation and the rankings of folks that I've got for your consideration are basically at that high level, with the exception of where I know a candidate or had them in a previous search.
Can you bring the mic a little bit closer to you?
Sure. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, super. So the process that we find works best generally with our clients are, as I go through and unpack these candidates, I'd ask you to simply jot down their name, and I'm asking you to put three-- one of three numbers. If you are interested in that candidate as a potential semifinalist, you think they're a strong candidate, you'd like to maybe learn more about them, I'd encourage you to just put a one by that candidate's name. If a candidate that maybe doesn't necessarily resonate as strongly with you as someone that you gave a one, but you might be interested in learning more about them, I'd encourage you to put a number two next to that candidate's name. And then there will be candidates that, for whatever reason, just don't resonate with you at all, and that's fine as well, just put a three at that point. And what we'll do at the end of this process, after we've gone through all the candidates, including any additional ones that you may want to add to the list, I'm just going to basically go through that list with you. I've got an interactive spreadsheet that I can basically capture your numbers, and we'll get a sense of where you are. And typically, that gets you down to a smaller pool. And we'll just see what that looks like because there's interesting numbers. If you like many, you're going to have a couple candidates that many of you like or majority of you like as a one. You're going to have some that is a kind of consensus candidates and ones and twos. You're going to have a bunch that probably may be threes for you. But it's important to kind of get a sense when you get to that eight to 12 that you've got a sense of, are there major differences where three or four of you have a one and one or two of you might have a three? We'd like to just talk through that to recognize, to make sure that you're comfortable with proceeding with that candidate, that you could consider them if you know more about them as well. Just consider that as we go forward. Everybody understand that process? One is top, two is maybe, three is no. And it's like a golf score. A low score will ultimately win, and I'll walk you through what that looks like as we go further. So without any particular order, I don't should place any judgment that the first candidate is the highest ranked, it's largely by alphabetical order and their first name. So don't attribute anything beyond that. But I wanted to just unpack these candidates, and what you're going to see in this slide is an example. I'm going to-- you've got, I believe you've got, or you may have it in front of you, you may have looked at it before, you've got their resumes and cover letters. So I'm just going to provide some high-level overview of these candidates. And if there's questions you have about them that maybe I haven't addressed, to the extent that we have that information, we'd be glad to address that as well. And we can do that either interactively, Mayor, or if you want to wait till we're all done and come back and react to a slide, we can, we can go back and forth if it's necessary. So, all right. So the first candidate for consideration is Angie Stone. Angie has worked in a variety of positions with the town of Hilton Head Island, another island community, obviously up in South Carolina, in the north of us, a little larger community at 38,000 in population. She currently serves as the Assistant Town Manager and overseeing their Community Engagement Division. She's been in that capacity since 2021. In that function, she oversees marketing, communications, cultural affairs, technology and innovation departments, and aligning their strategic plan with their operational functions as well. Has been, obviously, part of her title was community outreach, which I thought was an important element here, improving community events and engagement with the community and your day-to-day functions. And also oversees a destination marketing organization or DMO, which is done by a private sector, kind of a chamber that promotes the business and elements. They're very much, obviously, you can imagine, and Hilton had a very large tourism-type based community. Other positions she'd held was a Human Resource Director from 2018 to 2021. That would be similar to what you would see in most HR departments, and then served prior to that as a Senior HR Administrator from 2001 to 2018. So all her kind of professional public experience has been with Hilton Head Island. She's indicated she's obviously loves to be close to the water and also is interested in stepping into a lead role as a manager at a size community that she feels comfortable with as well. I won't go through their backgrounds in terms of education, you've all seen that going forward. There will be some acronyms that I'll try to unpack as we go through, if there's some, or if there's been some specialized senior executive training type experiences that I want to highlight.
Do you know how big the city of Hilton Head is?
Yes, it's 38,000. If they're a public organization, Mayor, we try to identify their population as part of this slide there. So 38,000. Next candidate, Brian Kelly. Brian Kelly is coming from the city of Sandy, Utah, presently serving as the Director of Administrative Services in that capacity as a Chief Financial Officer, a Chief Information Officer, and the Vice President overseeing their HR functions as well. He's been in that role since 2013. And prior to that, served as an HR and Management Services Director with that city, and then Assistant to the City Manager for a period of time from 1999 to 2002. So a little bit about the size of and the operations in Sandy City. It's about a $225 million operation with, obviously, serving as part of their executive team. Has handled, you know, a number of public-private financial deals for economic development efforts. That was an element of experience that you were looking for as well. Was part of the process that got them to a AAA bond rating, the highest rating you can get for financing operations, and handled a variety of ERP and technology interface processes during that window of time. Also was involved with doing a long-term budgeting finance plan, a 10-year financial plan. And an element here that a lot of cities have been moving is to doing business intelligence and decision support analysis and tracking good data to help you make good, strong decisions based on analysis and performance management type data as well. So that's another trend that we see as a best management practice. You can envision this position in-- prior to that was City Manager with the city of Washington Terrace, Utah, a community about your size, a little larger, for, from 2002 to 2003. And recognizing, you'll see that gap, he was at one point Assistant City Manager, went to become a manager, and then came back to, back to Sandy City, Sandy, Utah as well. So during that period as a city manager, was involved in some economic development and new town hall, construction of a new town hall, some new office and retail type spaces as well during that window. Next candidate is Kerry Vargo. Kerry most recently served as the Chief Executive Officer for Arrow Consulting up in Lytis, Pennsylvania. Served for a few years in that capacity. She had indicated that that was kind of a transition work, and she had always planned to return back to the public sector arena, and she's now back in the marketplace looking at positions in particular for city management type opportunities. I've not had her other than this search and a couple other searches I've got in Florida that she's been an applicant for as well. So Arrow Consulting is basically a consulting, engineering, and planning type focus, largely working with public sector clients, so working with elected officials, appointed officials, and working with public sector organizations. Pretty good-sized organization, about 215 employees, a budget of about $22 million, basically serving as their lead person. But prior to that, had served in a couple capacities as a township manager. I do a lot of work up in Pennsylvania, and Pennsylvania is a Commonwealth and has a litany of local government operations, from boroughs to villages to townships to cities and counties and everything in between, a variety of special districts. So when you think of townships, for the most part, they're, for the most part, they are very similar to city operations. They run fire, police, they may not run utility services in some cases, but for the most part, they operate like a smaller city would be. And these populations, you can see, are between 8,000 and 12,000 in the area. So in, in Upper Urshuan Township, for that position, was involved in, obviously, the planning focus of budgeting. They did win their GFOA award for the annual financial report, and were also involved in new software implementation processes and some IT-type improvements there as well. Their position as, Kerry's position as Township Manager in Thornberry Township, Pennsylvania, a community comparable in size for a couple years, did, at that point, initiated a strategic planning process largely based on a comprehensive plan. That was something that was identified here. And then prior to that, you can see, although not marked here, was involved as a law enforcement officer with the Coatesville Police Department. That's all Coatesville in that area, and Thornberry Township is in Chester County. That's all outside the Philadelphia, Pennsylvania metropolitan area. I do a lot of work with Chester County, so I know some of these communities a little better than others.
Do you know, she hasn't been at Arrow since April 2023? What has she been doing since then?
All I've got is, this fits where we know a little about a lot of candidates in the process, as she's indicated, looking to get back into the public sector arena. So I suspect she's been applying for positions. I've got her as an applicant in a couple of my searches, so I know she's looking to now get back. That's best I can tell you, Mayor. Okay, next candidate, Charles Anderson. Charles is currently the Deputy City Manager in Great Falls, Montana, a community of 60,000 in population, has been in that capacity since 2017. I know, I was asked to speak a couple years ago with the city manager in Great Falls, so I've been in that community. It's a lovely community, a very full-service operation, obviously a long way from Florida, but in the nature of the game, I'm very impressed with the operations. He was actually pulling together a variety of communities from the Great Plains area, if you will, to bring them in to talk about recruitment and retention strategy. So I got a chance to meet a number of community representatives when I was there in Great Falls a few years back. I was impressed with the city and what I saw in terms of the look and the feel and the innovation that they were doing in that operation. And so in Great Falls, he serves as Deputy City Manager. Their organization total is about 525 full-time employees, 17 different departments and divisions and agencies, and their overall budget's about $147 million, 38 of that being in the general fund and the rest being capital and utility operations. Has been involved in negotiations and collective bargaining and franchise agreements, developer of public-private partnership type work, and has also overseen their IT division and coordinated activity or citizen engagement through, as citizens, the first-ever citizen academy program to get folks engaged in the organization. Prior to that, was a Public Works Director in the city of Steamboat Springs, Colorado, a community about double your size. Steamboat Springs, obviously, a ski community, a lot of tourism, a lot of activity, high demand for services and expectations of quality services. As, although he's Public Works Director, overall oversaw about 113 different employees and had responsibilities for transit, engineering, water, wastewater, streets, fleet, environmental and airport divisions. His budget was about $13 million with about a $6 million capital improvement budget. And the other part there that you may note in his background is involved with Lean Six Sigma and looking at their operations. That's a way of evaluating performance and efforts and bringing teams together and evaluating how you can be more efficient and effective with your functions. So I was impressed with that work as well. And then prior to that was in the military, as a command chief or senior director on a couple different military bases for different periods of time, and then obviously had background in military programs as well.
Is that a civilian position or is that a?
The, this is one where I've got some acronyms coming after. The PMP has a master's and bachelor's, as noted, but the PMP is a project management professional. That's where you've gone to get, receive training to oversee project management and flow charts and processes. It helps in terms of overall keeping projects and capital projects in play as well. Next candidate, Kurt Fries. Kurt is going to be coming in representing, as you can see, a planning and zoning and community development type background. I will tell you that in my experience, we see a lot of candidates that come from community development departments that aspire to become city managers. The nature of that business is you tend to interact with all your departments, police and fire and code enforcement, and you tend to work, obviously, with your utilities and transportation and do a lot of economic development work. And so you kind of touch a lot of aspects of the city operations. So another waterfront area, Beaufort, South Carolina, about double your size as Community Development Director, has been in that role for about a year. And currently involved in a comprehensive code rewrite, dealing with different boards and oversight functions in that capacity. I know you're going through that with your raised TI and trying to determine, you know, what that looks and feels like. It's a significant work there as well. And then prior to that, served as Community Development Director in Berthaud, Colorado from 2015 to 2022. from 2015 to 2022. And at that point, they were dealing with a lot of growth. As you can see in their background, they said that the town almost tripled in size since 2015 with about 300 new homes built each year. Now, I don't expect you to have that type of growth here, but growth management is always a big issue, especially here in the state of Florida as well. Serves as an Executive Director and Assistant Director, Executive Director, in Henderson, Kentucky City-County Planning Commission in Henderson, Kentucky for four years. You'll see in a variety of other states, we have MPOs and TPOs here. Sometimes they cut across multiple counties. In other states, they are very often two or three or five-member, six-member counties. And so, it's basically serving as a regional planning group for a very large board, and the Executive Director would have a lot of insight with their Board of Directors and dealing with transportation planning and intermodal activities and planning and zoning and technical assistance to a variety of the communities that would be located within their districts. And then, as you can see, as a zoning specialist and administrator in Covington, Kentucky, and also a zoning administrator in Horry County, South Carolina, much larger earlier in his career as well. The AICP credentials is American Institute of Certified Planners, which is a credentialed status. So, you can be a planner and not be an AICP, but it develops a certification process there. So, demonstrates a commitment to continuing education and professionalism.
Doug, before you go off of Kurt. Kurt and a number of the other applicants had a limited amount of time in their current positions. He's only been in his position for 13 months. I did see, like I said, a pattern where there were many of the applicants had only been in their position for, some even just as little as three, three to four months.
Right.
Any, I mean, that's pretty quick.
So, I didn't, I don't recall seeing anything that raised any red flags with regards to Mr. Fries. We did the initial screening on the background, but I will tell you that there's two elements involved here. Sometimes it's a window of opportunity when a given type of community comes into play that you may have been looking for, that all of a sudden will drive their desire to do it. I will tell you, for those of us that are ICMA members, typically, if you accept a position, they like you to stay in that position, assuming you've committed and they've honored their commitment to you for a period of two years. But I often, sometimes find individuals saying, "This is an opportunity I really would like to explore," and they don't always come available. So, that's the best I can tell you, Commissioner, at the moment. That's certainly one of the things that we do ask as we go deeper into the process, saying, you know, have you, if you've left in any short period of time, what the circumstances would be and what are the drives for those decisions to come forward?
And what's their loyalty level towards their new employer as well?
Exactly. I'm very sensitive to the fact that no one wants to go through this process on an ongoing basis. I believe me, I love my clients, but I don't want to have to come back and redo your search in a short period of time to help you. So, I fully appreciate that. And that could be a factor. And just to say, some of these candidates have been with communities for a long time. Some have moved around a little bit and some are in shorter, shorter stages. So, thank you. Fair question, though. Yep. Okay, so I think that was with Kurt. So, Dana, Dana Shoning, also a planner by trade. I have had Dana as a semifinalist in some searches, but not of recent. It's been several years since I've had Dana in a couple of my searches, but he has, as I said, been a semifinalist in a couple of other City Manager positions a few years back. Presently, so presently, he is the City Manager in Tuttle, Oklahoma, comparable-sized community to you here in Treasure Island. In that fashion oversees a full-service city, police, fire, emergency management, handles, their budget is about $26 million overall operation, has done collective bargaining negotiation processes there as well, and overseeing a variety of capital improvement functions as well. Prior to that, served as an Assistant City Manager and Director of Planning and Operations with Sweetwater, Texas, a community of 11,000 for a few years from 2019 to 2022. At that capacity, oversaw code enforcement, parks, cemetery, streets, central services, aquatics, golf course, solid waste management and airport functions. And you can see some of the backgrounds as material, including a rewrite of a comprehensive plan. Was also the Director of Community Development with Wichita Falls, Texas, for two-year period. Oversaw code enforcement, housing administration, neighborhood resources, historic preservation board. They went through a downtown revitalization project during his tenure there. And then also served as Director of Planning and Development Services in the City of Abilene, Texas from 2015 to 2017. Similar type of functions and responsibilities that they would have in the previous positions. And then lastly, on this slide, was the Director of Community Development in Duncan, Oklahoma from 2015. Same sort of general services, had done a comprehensive rewrite of their plan, had done some corridor studies as well, and I know those are factors of consideration for you here as well. So, he is also a AICP member and a certified professional manager, CPM. Is a program of additional training where you typically go through a better part of a year of training with a variety of classes, usually with a local institution, a variety of other local officials that go through that as a team building and training-type experience.
And here's another example, though, of somebody that moves around quite a bit. It looks like the average tenure for the last nine years has been about two years in each job before he moves around quite a bit.
Yep, yep. And I will tell you, that was one of the factors. As I said, he's been a semifinalist in a couple of my positions in earlier years, but that was, you know, duly noted there. Yep.
And we're about a similar size to Tuttle, so do, and their budget is, our budget is slightly larger, but I wouldn't consider this like a huge jump up. So, that's what stood out to me as well. I understand if someone's hopping around jobs, moving up the ladder, but when you're making lateral moves.
And, and none of these have been waterfront communities either, you know, but so that's a factor, so it may be a concern in terms of wanting to come to be in a different, different climate, different part of the effort. Sometimes I will find, you'll see, because you've seen the cover letters, in many cases, I don't recall, there's a lot here. There's some that have made some reference about why Florida at this time that you've probably seen. But it's amazing to me, I find folks that are in various stages of their career and some want to come because they got aging parents, or they got kids, or they got grandkids, or they used to work in the state, they've worked out, and it's a mobile profession, they're looking to come back. There's a variety of stories that sometimes we hear about the front end. Most of the time, by the time they're semifinalists, I'm trying to get that out of them to get a better sense of what is about this particular community at this stage of your career. Absolutely. Next candidate, Jacob Smith. Jacob was previously the City Manager in Fruit Heights City, Utah, for a short period of time, a difficult transition there. And I apologize, I should have mentioned the front end of this. I think I mentioned, if I did not, I apologize. The nature of this position is there's a lot of controversy that comes with being a City Manager. And so, there's a lot of stuff. And in many cases, the joke that I will often say is City Managers are sometimes hired and fired with enthusiasm, but rarely by the same boards. Meaning, you can do a lot of things right with one board, an election occurs, or a transition in the politics occur, and you find yourself out of favor. And so, it kind of comes with the territory. So, if I forgot to mention that, there are a variety of things with, that we've done some initial work on that, you know, candidates are going to find themselves in controversy with. And we just recognize that sometimes comes with the territory. And if there's enough there, if there's concerns, if any of you have started doing Googling any of these candidates, I can certainly address what I know. But the point is, just recognizing, we typically delve into that at a higher level in the semifinalist level than the finalist level, unless they've done something where they've been convicted of a crime or charged or something of that nature. That's certainly a different circumstance there. So, Jacob had indicated there was transitions in council, some small-town politics had affected and found himself out of favor in that effort. But as you can see, served for close to 11 years in a previous position. So, sometimes that happens, you just kind of find yourself in the wrong, the wrong side of the fence in a, in a window there. So, but in that period of time, was involved in Fruit Heights City, Utah, a strategic plan to try to deal with their general plan accommodations, did some rewrites of their personnel policy and tried to also improve their budgeting process there. His position prior to that is an ACM and a Finance Director with Centreville City, Utah, from 2012 to 2023. Obviously, he had a longer tenure there, worked as a second-ranking executive for the city, led efforts in personnel, finance, budget, HR, IT, municipal court, risk, public relations, recreation, museums, and economic development. So, a pretty broad suite of responsibilities. And also worked with regional planners and businesses for economic development-type functions and activities as well. And then prior to that, worked with the State of Utah in their financing grants and budget divisions overseeing larger budgets and scale and scope before getting into local Next candidate, I actually know pretty well. As you know, I come from Lakeland, as a former City Manager in Lakeland. And Jim Slaton is currently the, the City Manager in one of our communities in Polk County, is the City of Lake Wales. Mr. Dickey, your comment, here's, here's another candidate that has been with one community for a long time and has progressed up the ladder through that effort. So, I've known Jim and kind of watched him grow professionally. I knew his, Ken Fields was the City Manager prior to that, and he was the Assistant and promoted him up through the ranks. So, I was pleased to see him get to that role. Jim is looking to get to the waterfront. Polk County, we have a lot of water in Lake, in Lakeland, but we don't necessarily have a lot, we don't have a water like you've got water here. And he's indicated, he's looked at a couple of opportunities where he could be closer to water and enjoy kind of a different quality of life there. So, Jim has worked his way up from an IT Director through all those different positions. He, a couple of acronyms here that I don't think we've seen in, in previous candidates yet. The ICMA CM credential is the International City-County Management Association, which is our international trade association. Most of us are members that are in this profession of that. The CM designation is a credentialed manager, which means that you go through a 360 evaluation of your skill sets, it's a peer review, you eventually get accepted into the program if you meet the qualifications, and then you commit to at least a minimum of 40 hours of training. And every year, you've got to document that, and you're basically trying to refine your skills and enhance your skills in areas that you may not necessarily be in strong at one point or other. So, you're going to see ICMA CM a couple of times. You mentioned that in your brochure being something that was of interest to you as well. The other piece, this is the first candidate that's been involved in one of these trainings. There are a couple senior executive training programs that are really well-known in our profession. One of them is the University, the Weldon Cooper Program at the University of Virginia. It's an intensive program, it's normally multiple months, where you actually are off-site and you're being involved and trained at the highest levels with a variety of other peers from local government officials. And so, you're going to see that pop up with a couple of your candidates have been through that. So, always like to highlight that. Once again, a commitment to professional development, not only with the CM credential, but also with executive training experience as well. So, what I can tell you about his experiences all professionally in the local government arena has been with Lake Wales. They have about 237 full-time employees, their budget's about $98 million. Also oversees their CRA operations, tax increment financing-type functions as well. During that period, he's grown and devised a couple of different departments, including the Horticultural Department and a Marketing and Community Engagement Department. And I thought that was important because another element, you've really got to engage community here and people that kind of have that and understand that importance of that function is pretty, pretty effort. The other functions are, I think, hopefully self-explanatory, but Jim has expressed an interest in getting to the water, but still would like to stay in the state of Florida. Next candidate, Jeff Milanich. Jeff is most recently from the City of Bozeman, Montana, obviously a larger community. I don't know if there's any Yellowstone fans in the group, that's where Bozeman is allegedly, you know, headquartered or based in the process. So, high tourism, high quality of life, high demand of services, activities. So, Jeff unfortunately left in the midst of a controversy, was involved in a Zoom call with a colleague that was, as he has indicated, was illegally recorded, and some disparaging comments were made, and ultimately, he decided it was best for him to resign and move on to another opportunity as well. So, but during that period of time, obviously, you can see a lot of work that he was involved with there. The fourth-largest city, it's certainly noted as one of the world's greatest places to live in terms of its climate and its actions. They have a lot of sustainability and climate action activities taking place, doing a lot of work with assisting in their legislation and lobbying and advancement of their legislative agendas. The next position he's with was a Deputy City Manager and Chief Operating Officer with the City of Fort Collins, Colorado. Obviously, a much larger community also out in the mountain range from 2014 to 2020. And I want to highlight that because I'm very familiar with the City of Fort Collins. When I was in Lakeland, we were one of the first cities to do priority-based budgeting before it became kind of a best management practice, where you link your priority, your strategic planning initiatives to your budgeting process, your funding things in an appropriate way. And his manager at the time, and myself and two other managers, were on a national stage talking about the value of what we do. And although I did not do the search, he eventually left just recently, about a year and a half ago, to accept the position in the private sector. But I got to know Fort Collins pretty well. They're doing some very bold, very innovative functions, and Jeff was obviously on the ground at that level, doing that priority-based budgeting elements as well. So, a larger community, clearly, budgets about 2,400 employees, about a billion-dollar annual budget, home to Colorado State University, also a AAA bond-rating community as well. And as I said, was involved in the performance excellence and the priority-based budget process there. So, that's recognized as a best management practice. Also done some private, public-private partnerships. I know that that's been an interest as you look at your economic development elements there. Obviously, different type of economy, but in the same token, understanding how that all comes together. And then prior to that, was an Assistant City Manager in Surprise, Arizona, also a larger community, from 2008 to 2014. Had about 736 FTEs, about $170 million operating budget, and handled that responsibility. Many times Assistant Managers either do internal service or external, he focused on the external services in that capacity as well. Is also a credentialed manager and looking to kind of pick up for his next opportunity.
Jeff, could you elaborate at all on the circumstances behind his resignation at his current position?
Certainly. The, as, as I have seen the, the information on it, and he's also giving me some background information about the position, saying that he realizes that's likely to come up. He had, he was talking with a colleague on a Zoom call and, not within the city, a colleague elsewhere, and had made some disparaging comments about some things that were happening with his community and with some of his council members that he was dealing with. And as it's been described to me, it was illegally recorded and then leaked out, and that became a controversy. And I, you know, he owns it, he respects it, says, "I've learned from that, obviously would never have anticipated this." I suspect all of us have been in some fashion, probably made a disparaging comment about someone else, but probably not worthy of thought that would ever become a public comment. And so, recognizing that's, you know, he's kind of leaving in that, and which is why he's looking for the next opportunity at this stage. I could not not advance him, given the work that he and his communities have done, I felt it was a fair effort. And as I say, what we normally do, there'll be other controversies with some of your candidates as well. Some point, it's sometimes a bridge too far, but if you like what you see, my encourage is to at least consider some of these folks as a semifinalist. Let them tell their story to you, and then you can make a determination, is that a bridge too far to cross or not? And every community will have a different level of tolerance for that. But as I said, the body of work and the communities he's worked in are exceptional communities with exceptional leadership, and he's just kind of gotten snagged on, on an issue on that one. Thank you. Next candidate comes fairly close to you, Jeff Schubridge. I don't know if any of you know Jeff in the past, so Jeff has worked with me off and on, he's been looking to kind of find his next opportunity. He served as a first-town administrator over in Reddington Shores, here in this, this part of the state, a smaller community than you for a period of time. I was impressed with the type of work he was trying to do there. I've talked to him on a number of occasions, both at FCCMA conferences, and he's looking for his next opportunity going forward. Jeff would like to stay in this area if possible, knows kind of the Pinellas County marketplace as well. Has done some improvements in terms of their community ratings for their FEMA insurance ratings and things of that nature, but also encountered trying to restructure a lot of financing programs, especially in the Building and Zoning Department. They're not really an enterprise fund, but they, you've got to keep those dollars accounted for using for building purposes, and there were some desires to move those dollars around and kind of got sideways with his board on, on that issue. So, is, was left Reddington Shores, once again, was a first-time town, town administrator for that community as well. He was previously a City Administrator in Madison Lake, Minnesota, another smaller community, for a few years as well. Had served also as their, functions as their Finance Director and a Zoning Administrator. You can imagine, a small community, it's kind of a chief cook and bottle washer, you tend to do a lot of roles, have that function. And then also served up in Groveland, up in the central part of the state, as a City Council Member for a year before accepting his position in Madison Lake. He expressed an interest in getting into local government, which is why I got his Master's Degree and then moved forward, and he's still looking for that next opportunity after Reddington Shores.
So, from Reddington Shores, did he resign or was he?
My recollection was he resigned, Mayor. Yes, under that, there was, you know, it was one of those pressure situations, and in many cases, managers will often say, "I'll resign for the betterment of the organization and just move on." Next candidate, Joe Gob. So, Joe, most recently, was the City Administrator in Marshalltown, Iowa. Let me kind of unpack Joe a little bit different than just chronologically. So, I've spoken to Joe because I was trying to get a sense of kind of his background and experience. You can see, he worked for a good portion of his career in Iowa in some relatively smaller communities and had very successful runs in that window. He had the opportunity, Iowa doesn't have a whole lot of, of City Manager forms of governments in big cities, and so, he saw the opportunity to kind of grow his ability to move into a larger city and went to Dickinson, North Dakota. So, a pretty big jump from 4,000 to about 25,000, but that was the motivation there. So, I want to tell the story and then I'll come back and unpack the, the positions. And then went from there, was recruited to look at the position, to go up to the City Aberdeen, South Dakota, a comparable-sized community, a little bit larger, and was then recruited then to come back to Iowa. And since he was part of the Iowa retirement system, decided that maybe he would come back and work in Iowa and get his final efforts to invest in the Iowa system, the state retirement system. So, but the goal was to move into a larger city, and he has told me when I've chatted with him. a larger city. And he has told me when I've chatted with him before, his goal was ultimately to get, after he got his sort of, after he got vested, that he wanted to come to Florida and spend his last ten, fifteen years in service in Florida as well. That was his, he and his wife's background desire to do. And so, so let me kind of unpack the circumstance. So he was in Marshalltown, Iowa, and ran into a challenge with some politics there about not wanting to necessarily keep the town administrator form of government process with elected officials and ultimately got sideways and said it was time to step aside and move from that position. He was immediately asked by Aberdeen to even think about coming back to be their manager, but their positions were filled and all that. He really enjoyed the work that he had done in Aberdeen, South Dakota. So, you know, he's had a body of work that has been pretty steady up until most recent, and it seems to be an explainable circumstance. So that's the relatively short period of time that you see in Marshalltown. But in that window, he did see about one hundred and fifty staff members, had total operating budget about eighty million dollars. The position in Aberdeen, South Dakota was two hundred and seventy-five staff members, total budget of about a hundred million dollars. Been involved in some major capital projects and water and wastewater-type productions, also involved in collective bargaining agreements. And then when he was in Dickinson, North Dakota, had about two hundred staff members and about seventy-million-dollar budget, and also was involved in some downtown redevelopment in Dickinson. And let's see, where else want to go with it there? From city manager in smaller communities in Charlton, Charltonton, Iowa, and also the city administrator and public works director in Woodbine, Iowa. Relatively small communities, you could envision, you know, kind of a functional services, they would be involved, but obviously in a much smaller scale. Joseph also has credentials as a credentialed manager, as an ICMA member. Next candidate, Kathleen Murray. Kathleen is currently serving as a grant writer and administrator in the village of Freeport, New York, a community of about forty-four thousand. And in that capacity oversees doing basically grants for, it's a waterfront village, so would have some waterfront experience, not necessarily the area of, you know, to an ocean here, but handling economic development, infrastructure improvements, water, electric, things of that nature, trying to find grants and overseeing grants and programs from there. Part of that served in a variety capacities with the village of Rockville Center, New York, as a village administrator, a deputy village administrator, and also director of community development. I don't have the individual breakdown, so I've just got that from 2011 to 2021. So about ten-year stretch in that capacity as well. That was a full-service government, including police, fire, public works, water, electric, accounting, treasury, human resources, about three hundred employees and managing staff, about ninety-million-dollar of annual budget activities. Also was involved in improving their bond ratings at that point. Ken Griffin. Ken is a candidate that was most recently involved in a search that I was doing for a county here in Florida and decided to pull out because he wanted to stay in this area. He still has property, as you'll see, he has worked, later you'll see he worked over in Hillsborough County and still maintains some property here. But pretty strong candidate with a background in not only city management, but also professional, professional engineer here in the state of Florida. Currently serving as a director of public works and utilities in Roxboro, North Carolina. He's been in that capacity since 2023. In that function, he was, is doing, makes sense, about a variety of infrastructure projects involving twenty-five-million-dollar wastewater treatment plant operation, twenty-six-million-dollar gravity enforcement type projects, a variety of stormwater projects, gravity sewer projects, water sewer kind of construction, public works type functions you would envision. His capacity as a director of engineering and facilities and capital projects and stormwater utilities in Sebastian, Florida from 2019 to 2021, all involving utility operations, engineering functions as well. I know you have water and sewer provided by the county, but I know you also do stormwater here as well. You have to interface with that group clearly as well. Served for a period of time as a principal manager and engineer with Reynolds Engineering here in Tampa. It's a private sector consulting engineering firm, working with local government functions. And then served as the county administrator and utilities director in King William County, Virginia, for a one-year period as well, and involved in that fashion doing, it's in the Richmond, Richmond, Virginia area, close to the state capitol there, doing, you know, traditional utility-type functions and overall administration functions of the county. Was in King William County as a county administrator and utilities director for a one-year period, and then also served as a director of public utilities in Smithfield Public Utilities in Smithfield, North Carolina for a one-year period. So engineers, I would tell to your point as well, engineering folks often move around a little bit more. Engineers are hard to find, and when you get them, they often are recruited and moved on to other opportunities. Right now, it's one search I hate to do when my closest colleagues ask me to do a city engineer. It's really hard to hire them right now because their compensation is so much greater in the private sector. Some other experience that I wanted to note, he was a general manager of an organization called BJWSA. It's a regional water, wastewater and reclaimed water authority up in the southeast part of South Carolina for that capacity. But I think the longest stint that I think that gets him back and why he's expressed and ultimately withdrew from another search that I had because he wanted to get back to this side of the state, he served as the assistant county administrator for infrastructure development and services and the director of operations and management here at Hillsborough County from 2006 to 2011. So a lot of oversight, a lot of project management, understands, obviously, you know, in Hillsborough County, impacts of weather, hurricanes, all those types of functions as well. A pretty extensive educational background, a doctoral degree, master's degree, two master's degree, engineering program, is a credentialed manager and also a certified manager, professional engineer certification here in the state of Florida. Lawrence McNaul. Lawrence is a director of mission capability in a group called KBR Incorporated Houston, Texas, although he's working remotely at this point. He actually lives in Bowling Green, Florida at this stage. So as you can imagine, a lot of work is done remote at this stage in the world. So in that capacity, it's actually working with a lot of logistic-type functions, working with six different directory reports, three hundred and fifty employees, working in foreign and local, national labor, support roles for airfield operations, productivity, security, fire emergency services, emergency management, builtering, building and operational control center, just a lot of organizational support and logistical-type work as a contractor to support the operations overseas. Part of that capacity was a county manager here in Hardy County, Florida, been in that role from 2019 to 2023. When I saw some of the background and material on that, he was actually hired to be kind of a change agent to help them go through a variety of changes. And that created some challenges and issues for him that you're likely to read about later as well. And part of that was a city manager in West Liberty, Iowa, smaller community, for about six years. You know, smaller community handling basically, West Liberty was forty-five full-time employees, thirty-five seasonal and about nine department heads and about a fifteen-million-dollar budget. So a much smaller function and as a military, obviously in Navy and Army, military intelligence work before getting into the public sector arena. Next candidate, Michael Sluzek, Sluzek, excuse me. Presently the town administrator with the town of Blanford, Massachusetts, small community, been in that role for a year, has indicated that he is basically overseeing their functions, their budgets, day-to-day, you know, small-town operation, looking to get into a larger community at this stage. Was previously the business operations manager and public works director for the town of Enfield, Connecticut, much larger community from 2016 to 2023. In that capacity, had about thirty-million-dollar public works operating budget and reported and worked directly with the town manager and the council. Served as a town administrator in Starling, Massachusetts. I don't have a lot of detail on that role for about four or a couple of years. And then also a town manager in the town of Athol, Massachusetts from 2020 to 2014. Michael is an attorney by trade, but also has a master's degree in finance and has continued then obviously pursuing the public sector arena as opposed to working in the legal field.
Can you hang on one second?
Certainly.
Just need one second to...
His resume, if you're going to move around to kind of find the positions, there are some, there are some gaps there that I'm assuming that he was involved in some, just doing legal work, because I can't, I can't collect some of the gaps after about 2013, but his resume doesn't indicate where he's at in that regard.
So Blanford, his most recent one, he's, it just says 2024. There hasn't been much of 2024 yet, but...
Right.
That's a very small community one.
Exactly. Yeah, thousand population. So the sense there is looking to get into something larger. And brings kind of a diverse background. I was in the mix because of the diversity of a law background and some of the other smaller communities he worked with in a, you know, up in the Northeast that I thought might be of interest here as well.
So Athol had eight thousand... The city of Athol, Massachusetts had eight thousand residents and Sterling.
Both of those are about eight thousand in population. Good?
Okay.
Okay. Patrick Kaminsky. I've had a chance to chat with Patrick on, to learn a little bit more about his background as well. Patrick, most recently, was the city manager up in Mount Dora, Florida from 2021 to 2024. Once again, if you've seen the background material, was brought in to really do a lot of changes and was dealing with a lot of kind of financial constraints and trying to build some capital projects and issues. Election occurred, different mayor came into effect, found himself kind of sideways with direction with the previous, or I guess the current mayor at this point. Had a lot of community support, ultimately decided to resign from the position when it was all said and done, looking for the next opportunity. If you look at the body of his work, he's worked extensively in a couple of other communities and most recently, or 2002 to 2016, as a city manager. It's a very strong run. The average tenure of a city manager nationally is about five to seven years, just the nature, the nature of the game. So sometimes you'll see in these smaller communities who've gone through. I know a little of Mount Dora. They have gone through a variety of managers in previous years. So there's certain, Gary would know this as well, there's certain communities in Florida we know will go through them. So Mount Dora's had some stretches where they've been strong, and then they've gone through some transitions as well. So it's a challenging community, I believe, to be a manager in. Part of that, so Mount Dora, obviously, as you can see in his background, he's highlighted some of the things that he brought about, some of the improvements. Had a lot of support. I did see a lot of information about community support for him when he was going through some challenges up there, trying to retain him as the manager. But at the end of the day, decided to resign and is now looking for his next opportunity. The position in Cambridge, Maryland, that is, if any of you know the Eastern Shore area of Maryland, that's an eastern shore community. So tourism, waterfront, you know, those sort of elements. People go from the DC metropolitan area and head down to the Eastern Shore. I've done some recruitment work and used to work in the DC area as well. So has a lot of tourism activities and flavor to it as well. I think it would look and feel similar to you here. And then, but obviously a smaller community, about thirteen thousand there, and they had their budgets of about a hundred and twelve employees and budgets of about twenty million dollars. And then his position as a city manager in Thomasville, Thomas Town, Georgia, from 2002 to 2016, a good, a good strong run there. Basically, budget of about twenty-five million and about a hundred and thirty-five. Now, obviously, those numbers were different because of the years involved. There would be a larger budget now than it would be at that stage of the game. So, you know, has involvement with tourism-type communities, has strong involvement, understands Florida marketplace clearly, and is also a certified public manager, CPM as well, purchasing manager, excuse me, certified purchasing manager in this capacity. Next candidate, Patrick Marsh. I've had Patrick in a couple of my searches in the past, and actually I've had him as a finalist in two searches, but unfortunately the timing didn't work out where we had conflicts where the interviews were going to occur at the same time. He was doing consulting work and he had to be in two places at one time and had to withdraw on both of those. So we know a little bit more about Patrick and the work. So he's now, he does live here in Florida at this stage of the game. He looks to, wants to stay in Florida, wants to continue in city management. He served for a short period of time initially as an interim, and then as a short period of time in Fernley, Nevada. There were some challenges there where there was some pressure to hire someone that council member wanted to do. He didn't want to, he didn't want to hire that person under the council manager form and decided to separate at that point. But his, most of his career prior to that was in Wisconsin. He served for a lengthy time from 2015 to 2021 in Pittsburgh, Wisconsin, as their city manager, and then also served in a community of Monona, Wisconsin, as a smaller community in economic development and city administrator. So I'll give you some size and some dollars associated with Patrick's functions here. So in Fernley, about a forty-nine-million-dollar operating budget, handled day-to-day type functions of a full-service city. The consultant work was largely doing interim work and zoning and planning and economic development work that he's done after he left Pittsburgh. And Pittsburgh was about a forty-six-million-dollar operating budget. And the work that he did as city administrator and economic development director in Monona, about a thirteen-million-dollar budget at that time with twelve different departments, close to a hundred employees as well. He is also a credentialed manager.
Is the city administrator position the same as the city manager, just a different term?
Yes. Valid question. It used to be distinction, a city manager typically had hiring and firing authorities over department heads and city administrators didn't, but that line is blurred based on the community. So in some cases, they have full authority. They're just called an administrator, like a county administrator might be, versus the county manager. But what we normally ask when we get to that level is, who do you supervise, what departments, what are your oversight responsibilities? So for purposes today, I think you can largely interchange those two, Commissioner, though. Yep, absolutely. And different, in fact, I think in Wisconsin, as I recall, there are only two or three cities that actually have city managers. Most of the, most of the communities in Wisconsin, I've got some friends that are up there, are administrators, and they do have full functioning authority as well. Next candidate, Pat Omen, Patri or Pat Omen. Pat is most recently, Bicker County, Minnesota. You're going to see Pat has a background in kind of planning and economic development, largely in the ED side of the equation that I thought might be of interest here. Pat's looking for his next opportunity as well. Brings about twenty years of experience in the public sector arena. So in his most recent role in Becker County, oversaw ten different departments, about three hundred and seventy-seven employees, budget's about sixty-eight million dollars. Counties, as you know, will have courts and social services and other functions that cities don't have, but the skill sets are very comparable. We see a lot of people moving from cities to counties and back and forth in that arena as well there. So don't let that scare you as well. Served a period of time, just for a one-year window, with Skywater Technology. It is a, it's basically a investor-owned semiconductor manufacturer, basically was between positions and served in that capacity. So not necessarily directly related to the positions here. But prior to that, from 2015 to 2021, was the county administrator in Millocks County and Millocka, Minnesota, from twenty, about twenty-six thousand in population. And they had, oversaw functions of two hundred and sixty-four employees, about a fifty-seven-million-dollar operating budget there as well. Was involved in Minnesota in any of these positions at the lead role, heavily unionized states, collective bargaining experience and functions and negotiating of those. His position as a city administrator and executive director of their housing redevelopment authority in the city of Moose Lake, Minnesota, smaller community, served in that capacity for a couple of years as well. Had eight different departments, fifty-seven employees and budget, operating budget of about five million there in that, in that particular capacity. Also oversaw, oversaw their redevelopment authority, dealing with housing and economic development functions. And then his position as director of economic development and executive director of their economic development agency and housing redevelopment authority in Carlton County, Minnesota from 2005 to 2013, and oversaw ten different county operations, worked with ten different cities, fourteen townships, and oversaw budgets of about ten million dollars there in that capacity. The capacity here, a couple of different master's degree. The EDFP is an economic development financial professor. One of the two credentials you can get through the International Economic Development Association. So it's real strong in economic development programs as well. Paul Brake is a candidate I've known for a long time. Before I came down to Florida down in 2003, I spent twenty years up in Michigan, was very active in the state association and the league. Paul, most recently, that's why I got to know Paul way back when, in earlier parts of my career. But way back when, he, most recently, was in the city manager position with the city of Royal Oak, Michigan. Royal Oak is a very affluent community in the Detroit metropolitan area, upscale, high-level, quality services programs. As you can see, a larger community, fifty-seven thousand in population. You look at the efforts he was involved, basically about a hundred and fifty employees, I'm sorry, about a hundred, three hundred and... I'm sorry, about a hundred, three hundred and thirty employees, about a hundred and fifty part-time, operating budgets about two hundred and twenty million dollars. Been involved in some, some public-private ventures up there, been involved in some new city hall development complex and other public facility-type construction activities. And also been involved in some sustainability and climate action plan activities up in Royal Oak. Royal Oak went through a transition in their elected officials and Paul found himself out of favor in that regard and decided to resign. Prior to that, he worked with the city of Morgantown, West Virginia. Any of you who are UVA fans would know that's a University of Virginia college town as well. Served in that role from 2017 to 2020. There oversaw about ten different department directors, two hundred and seventy-five employees, full-time employees, about thirty-seven million operations. Been involved with waterfront downtown development actions there as well. And then, previous to that, worked as a city manager in Grand Blanc, Michigan, from 2011 to 2015. Grand Blanc, smaller community, but I don't know if they still have it. It used to be the Buick Open was in Grand Blanc, PGA event. So they would have some tourism and activity that would come in during that, that national event as well. And in Grand Blanc, I'm sorry, I passed one. His work in Safe, Safebuilt Incorporated worked from 2015 to 2016. Basically working with technical and training and planning services for local government operations up in Michigan for that one-year period. And then was in Grand Blanc after that, my mistake, or prior to that. Grand Blanc was a nine-and-a-half million dollar budget, thirty-one full-time, ten part-time employees. And then was an assistant township manager in Meridian Township, a hundred and ninety employees, about a thirty-five million dollar operation at the time. You see, Paul has both a master's and a bachelor's, is a credentialed manager. The highest level accreditation you can get from the economic development field is the Certified Economic Community Development. That's the CECD program. Also was involved in not one, but two different senior executive programs, the two biggies. Basically, the University of Virginia that I spoke of earlier, and then the John F. Kennedy School Government at Harvard University is the second program. So was involved in both. And Paul's looking for his next, next opportunity. Real strong credit. Rob Hilliard. Rob is a first-time candidate. I've not had him in my searches in the past. Presently serves as a city manager and treasurer in the city of Oberlin, Ohio. Oberlin's kind of this northeastern, central northeastern part of the state. Oberlin College, if you may be familiar with that as well, a community of eight thousand. It's been in that, that capacity since 2016. Oversees police, fire, dispatch, full service of local government operations, water, wastewater, collection, storm sewer, functions, refuse, the whole gamut of those operations. And then prior to that, served as the city manager and clerk of the city of Allegan, Michigan, from 2005 to 2016. Once again, full service effort, including downtown street service, downtown redevelopment, marketing, airport operations, elections, fire district, ambulance services, things of that nature. Scott Moye, is the way it's pronounced, is presently the county manager in Ware County Board of Commissioners in Ware County, Georgia. Ware County is just north of our north line, north of Jacksonville. So the first major county, if will, going north of the Florida state line. So in that capacity oversees fifteen different departments. Has functions of full-service operation of a traditional county, similar to what you'd find here, but is recognized, obviously, in a different state in Georgia. He served for a three-year period in a group called Procure to Pay or P2P operations in Waycross, Georgia. And in that fashion was basically handling a window of supply chain division for the Mayo Clinic and helping them to basically identify their processing and payroll and procurement and payment of functions for vendors that work with them. Part of that was involved in a variety of a local government and training opportunities. One was the city administrator in Blackshear, Georgia, a community a little smaller than you, from 2004 to 2013. Pretty strong run there with about forty-two full-time employees. Oversaw fire, police, clerk, technology, economic development, human resources, kind of the main gamut of functions there. And then also has served as an adjunct professor or an instructor with Coastal Plains Technical College since 2005. And part of that was serving two different capacities in the city of Fernadina Beach, once again up in the northeastern part of the state. Waterfront area as well, as a deputy city manager from 2000 to 2004, and then as the interim city manager during that period of 2001 to 2002 as well. And in Fernadina Beach at that time was overseeing about a seventy-six million dollar budget, twenty-five million capital, including a golf course and a marina and full-service city. I've known a couple of the managers that have served up in Fernadina Beach. So I think you'd find some comparabilities in terms of that. I, they do a lot of tourism activities there as well. Getting close, folks. Only got a couple more to go. Stanley Hawthorne is a candidate I know pretty well because I actually hired him as an assistant city manager when I was in Lakeland, Florida. He was one of my two assistant city managers. So I'll kind of work my way back from that window. That's where I got to know him and he served in that capacity from 2004.
Can you bring your mic a little closer?
Okay, sorry. So Stanley served in, as an ACM in my community from 2005, 2011. Largely oversaw the internal service funds and I mentioned earlier, we were doing the whole priority-based budgeting and strategic planning linking. He was overseeing that program when we were involved with that function. Stanley left us to then go on to work with Lee Feldman, who is a very well-known manager here in the state. Was the president of FCCMA, but also the president of the ICMA, and he was the city manager in Fort Lauderdale. Had a chance to move into a much larger, much more metropolitan area and served in that capacity from 2011 to 2019. Lee left and a variety of transitions have occurred. He and many of the other folks that were with Fort Lauderdale similarly left. He tried to strike it as a, as a private sector consulting world, but the timing, as you look at that window, was right around the COVID window and was decided that that window was not going to operate, but he was trying to get into local government functions and responsibilities there. From there, he's worked in two, what I would say, challenging communities. I do a lot of work in recruitment up in the Hartford metropolitan area. Bloomfield is a community that's gone through a couple managers in recent years. A very challenging community. He was there for a couple of years, ran into some changing dynamics on their council. Community really liked him and wanted him to stay, decided he would leave and move on. The city manager in College Park, Georgia, obviously a university community for the University of Georgia. And also went through some transitions there. If you start to read some material, there'll be some information about dismissals with cause. I've talked to him, I've followed some other materials. In the heat of the battle, that was not the case. He ultimately was allowed to resign and there was no cause found in the area. So I'll just give you a heads up that you'll see some of that area. I've talked to Stanley a little bit about that. He really wants to come back to Florida. He's, he's tried some places that were more challenging. Not that Florida isn't challenging, I understand that, but he's looking to come back to Flori, he's got a history before he came with us in Lakeland and is looking to basically kind of finish up his career. He's still got plenty of years in his tank, so to speak, but wants to come back to territory that he knows and appreciates much better than the two last communities he's been in his wall with. So, strong manager, good, good effort, good experience, and certainly understands Florida and certainly he went through us in 2003. Was my first year and we went through the hurricane season. So he's been through that as well as what you would imagine in Fort Lauderdale with the hurricanes that they experienced there as well. Taylor Brown. Taylor's another candidate I've known off and on professionally. Taylor, I've got to know him through FCCMA. He's presently serving as your, as the executive director and Taylor County Department Development Authority. And he's kind of serving in that capacity after leaving the city of Perry. He was involved as the city manager in the city of Perry when they went through, as you saw in their background, they had a hurricane that basically came in and Hurricane Adalia made landfall and basically impacted them pretty severely at that window. They were in pretty heavy recovery mode. And then, three weeks after that, George Pacific, their largest employer, was announced their closing of their cellulose mill. So talk about the double whammy and going through the challenges and issues. So decided to leave Perry, but he was asked to stay on in Taylor County to help them go through this transition with the recognition he's looking for his next opportunity. So has that hurricane experience, certainly understands the Florida environment, has worked in a variety of smaller communities here in the state. As you can see, two thousand to four thousand in population, has some planning and zoning background in his experience as well. So he is, as I say, looking for the next position after leaving Perry and kind of an interim role in the Taylor County Department Development Department. But in terms of scale and scope in Perry, their budget's about thirteen million dollars, about eighty-five employees, full-service type functions. And in the case of his position as city manager in Mary Esther, Florida, their budget, operating budget was about six million with about forty-five employees as well involved there. And function in Trenton, Florida, budgets, operating budget there was relatively small, two-point-five million with about twenty-five employees overall. Next candidate.
But do not, sorry, on the beep, what specifically, is that an economic development entity?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah. So basically, and when I talked to Taylor about what he was involved with there in the function, they're trying to figure out the redevelopment of the plant and the impacts and all, as you can imagine, the larger employer, all the tax base that goes. As I understand it, the, the, George Pacific is going to retain ownership. At one point, they were talking about maybe selling it or getting out of it altogether and allowing the redevelopment. When I last talked to Taylor about a week and a half ago, the decision was they were going to retain the ownership of the property. So now they're in this, how do we, how do we recover from this operation, both with a hurricane recovery at the same time? You're dealing with a major economic impact and labor impact. So it's all economic development, to your point, though. Ted Yates. I had a chance to meet Ted a year ago at the FCCMA conference. At that point, he was the newly minted village manager in Isla Marada, Florida, down in the Keys. And he was looking to come in and do some strategic planning and programming elements and make some changes there. He was hired with that type of function. And any of you who have been in the Keys know that the Keys is a different place to operate in. Certainly waterfront and certainly dynamics, but politics have changed and he found himself looking for another opportunity. So he's currently working with a private sector group there with a business in Isla Marada, but is looking to get back into the city manager arena. His background's a little bit different than some of the other candidates you've got. He was the mayor, they call mayor and public safety director. In Ohio, whether you're a city manager, a city administrator, or a mayor, if you have full CEO kind of responsibilities over the oversight of the function in Ohio, they call that the public safety director. So yes, that includes overseeing police, but it includes the whole gamut of the functions of a local government. So don't get, don't get caught up that it's only over the police functions there. But basically, served as a strong mayor in that fashion and did that from 2015 to 2022. Prior to that, was an elected official with the Twinsburg City Council, but as the, as the mayor basically would handle all the day-to-day functions and responsibilities of a, of a chief executive officer. And you can see in his budget, there's material that he's got there. So just give me, I'll go back to the position in Isla Marada. So Isla Marada was about a thirty million dollar budget, general fund of about twenty, about twelve department heads, about a hundred full-time and part-time seasonal employees. In Twinsburg, their budgets, annual budget was about forty-five million dollars, operating general funded about twenty-nine million, thirteen different department heads, about two hundred and fifty. A hundred and eighty full-time and two hundred and fifty part-time seasonal employees, full gamut of functions in aquatic centers, water park, golf course, restaurant, banquet centers, all those sort of things. So kind of a full-service functioning city as well. And Ted is also an attorney by trade, but has not been doing that. Obviously been operating in the local government arena, but has a law degree and served previous to his public service work as a, as an attorney. There were two candidates that the, I was asked to include in the, in this list as well for presentation that were some of interest. The first one was Andreas Bizbikos. Andreas has served in a variety of capacities with the town of Colchester, Connecticut, a community of sixteen thousand. You're gonna see the term first selectman or chief executive officer. Many, right around the Hartford area, there's a lot of town managers that operate under a town council or a commission manager, former government. But many communities in Connecticut operate under a traditional strong mayor, former government. And so instead of calling them the mayor, they're called the first selectman. And the first selectman, just like in Ted Yates' position, is in essence your highest elected appointed official and serves as the CEO of the organization. So hiring, firing, appointing, putting the budget together, all the oversight of the department operations in that fashion. So served in that capacity for a couple of years as a first selectman. Prior to that, many of these communities up in Connecticut also have elected positions that provide insight into their budgeting or insight into their public safety operations. And they basically are like an oversight department working with a police department or the finance director and things of that nature. So in Colchester, it was elected position. He served in that effort as part of their board of finance. They're normally three to five members and they basically serve like an elected body working with the finance director to oversee their, their operations and help them develop their budget. And then was also serving in, when Colchester is the Economic Development Commission from 2009 to 2015, helping in economic development type functions. Part of that, working in education and civics and training and programs in there. But there was apparently some interest in at least having a conversation about his, his background. Another candidate, also coming from Polk County, that was asked to incorporate into the presentation today is Tandra Davis, or Tonra Davis. Presently the town manager, been in, in the town of Dundee. That's over in Polk County, over in my neck of the woods. I do not know Tonra that, well, I know the name, but I have not had a chance to meet her, so I don't know her personally. But served as the interim manager and is currently the town manager, but prior to that, also served for a year as the finance director. So kind of moved into some different roles in a relatively short period of time in Dundee. So prior to that position, so give me an idea, I think she gave me some ideas and numbers here. Let me grab that. I apologize. You do not have budget numbers on, on her operations. Prior to that, she served as the Finance Assistant Director in the city of Fort Meade, also a community in Polk County. Smaller community also, about five thousand, served in that capacity for a few years. And then after that, had worked in a variety of private sector kind of accounting and finance-type positions. There also in Polk County in Lutland, Florida, with a couple of different organizations as well. So let me stop there. And I know we've gone through a lot of those folks. I wanna, are there, are there any questions that we didn't address any of these folks? And then I want to ask, you know, we'll address those first, or if we could go back to, to address any of those points. And I also want to ask the question, is there anybody that has not been on this list that maybe you saw in your material? And if so, we can bring up those, that material as well. I'll turn it back over to you for any questions.
Could you bring back up Joe Gads?
Certainly.
We were going pretty at that point and I.
He was not on your shortlist, right?
No.
I'm sorry. If he's in this presentation, he was part of my, my recommendations for consideration, yes. You may have seen a list that was kind of evolving. I was, this week, I've gone through three, three different triages, so I apologize. When I meant, when I sent, what I sent to the city initially, I said, I'm still looking through a bunch of these candidates, so some of these names may get changed. So that may have been your confusion, Commissioner. My apologies on that.
Okay, so Marshalltown, Aberdeen. Oh, this was the Iowa guy.
Yep.
From Iowa. Iowan, so, and the Dakotas. Okay. Are there any others that we need him to bring back up?
I saw somebody on the list, his name Paul D Y A L Dial. I thought he was kind of interested.
Dial?
Di, Paul Dial.
Yep, let me, let me escape this and get to the list here.
He's from Lake City.
Yeah. His name was Paul, I believe you said.
Last name is D Y.
I got it, I got it there. I got it, yep. Let me catch up to that slide, Commissioner. Okay. All right. Yeah, so was the. All right, yeah, so was the. City manager in city of Lake City from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. I don't have much. He also oversaw the director of utilities in that window. Oh, I see, let me get back in the process. This candidate has a lengthy career with, with Lake City in a variety of capacities, moving all the way up to the city manager director utility position and then left in February of twenty twenty-four. So in the capacity of city manager, he was overseeing police, fire, utilities, finance, human resources, procurement, public works, information, technology, growth management, community development, airport, customer service, about two hundred employees and about seventy million dollar budget. And the position is interim city manager and executive director of utilities, doing the work of the city manager, but obviously carrying a dual role because he was split between his previous work as the utilities and then also serving as a public works director position. So a little bit of, you know, public, or a little bit of, of capital project management type skills there, some grant work type work. Certainly a lot of work in the utilities and infrastructure arena.
He's no longer with Lake City?
No, he's indicated he is no longer with Lake City. I don't have anything else on Mr. Dial on that regard, though, apologize.
Is there any reason why he wasn't on your list?
Most of the positions you've seen that I've recommended, they've been in the lead role as a manager for multiple periods of time, five, six years or beyond. So although this would have been, you know, his background as a, as a city manager role is a little less than that, and that was, that was predominantly the reason in terms of the background. A lot of utility work, and I know your water and sewer is largely provided by your county here. So there's some project management skill sets. So as I said, we had a lot of people in, in, that applied for the position that were qualified, but I wouldn't necessarily put them as high up in the risk as some of the others who have been in that lead CEO type position or in a department role very close to the city manager. But at the end of the day, these are your candidates in mind. I want you to feel comfortable with who you ultimately select.
So for these ones that we all bring up to review, we should rank those as well?
Yeah, I can add their names if you'd like me on that process. When we go to that point, I will certainly add that. So I will put his name on the list for consideration. Were there any other names of individuals?
But anyone else? We'll look at Dax Norton.
Chance Mayor to catch up with his material. All right, so Dax brings about twenty years of experience in small business development, quality of place, human capital type overall functions. He's indicated that at one point, led a team of seventy-seven, oversaw a budget of about sixteen million dollar in functions and responsibilities. Presently involved as the principal owner of Crossroads Municipal Management, doing business as Crossroads Management Advisors in Zionsville, Indiana. Been in that role from twenty nineteen to present. Looks to be a private municipal consulting firm operations. The capacity is director of economic development grants and funding and municipal strategy with MS Consultants in Indianapolis from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. Had functions of municipal operations, economic development consulting programs, working with underfunded and understaffed communities, basically serving as a staff resource to smaller communities doing economic development efforts. Served as a town manager for economic development in the town of Wilston, Indiana, from, for six years, from twenty thirteen to twenty nineteen. That was indicating the fifth fastest growing town at that point in America. Managed a budget of sixteen million dollars and a team of close to ninety-seven people. And then was the executive director of the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs in Indianapolis, Indiana from twenty thirteen, working on a statewide agency function there. And then also served as an executive director in Boone County Economic Development Corporation from two thousand eight to twenty thirteen. So basically, economic development background, program skills at state levels, largely private sector type levels and with one town manager position in between. In response to your question, so a little bit, been doing consulting work that certainly related to local government, been out, out of the role for a period. Served that six-year stint back in twenty nineteen, but out of that, that day-to-day functions responsibilities. The other components I had on this, most of your candidates had masters or above this, this particular candidate had a bachelor's as well. So those were some of the reasons of having to determine which, which presentation I included or not, but those would have been some of the drivers there.
Did you bring up Peter Jankowski?
At one point, I was looking at that, and I was a little concerned with the number of positions that he had had in the transition. So that's why I didn't have it. But I'm more than allowed to bring it up, but that was why.
Very similar to a lot of the others.
Yeah, but if you'd like, I'm more than allowed to bring them up if you want. That was, at the end of the day, as I said, I was still doing some evaluation. That was a bit of concern, the number of transitions going through that were, you know, extensive.
Okay. Can you pull up David Harville?
That is an individual who accepted another position. He was one of that had resigned, I'm sorry. Had he not taken the position, he was going to be in my list.
Where did he, where did he go?
I do not remember. I remember him telling me, but it didn't stick with me. I apologize, Mayor.
I wrote down Ashley Billow Doe, which was, I think she was very early on in the.
Yeah.
So I, that may have been early preview bias.
Sure.
I haven't looked at her profile since then, but.
I was interested, let me, I'll bring it up here. Let me get that here and I'll bring up the slide. The concern there, because I was intrigued by her status.
Was she the Canadian?
She's the Canadian, so that was part of the reason, given that you had such a pool of, of, you know, qualified candidates. I was a little concerned to bring that into the mix, but let me bring that up.
She does have a great skill set.
Yeah, I, I, she indicated in her application materials that although she, she's not, one of the questions to ask are you currently eligible to work in the U.S.? And she said no, but then later in their material, she had indicated that she believes that she could get a visa, but could only do that after an employment offer were provided. So there's a little bit of a, you know, tug and pull there. Every once in a while, I run into some Canadian candidates that are dual citizenship and that you can come back and forth and do that without the case. I did like her background, like you, Mayor. I thought that she had a good skill set. I liked the size of the organizations. I liked her background and planning and, and work. But at the end of the day, I was just concerned about not having the certainty of, of if ultimately she could come into the role and get the appropriate visas to, for work purposes.
Did she say anything about her desire to be coming to Florida or coming to the States?
I do not believe in her cover letter that I, that she said that, Mayor, but let me double check that.
I assume in Canada, they have all, whole different type of government structure and also they're not members of the same, like ICMA.
Yeah, we, it is international, so we do have folks from all over the world that are part of ICMA. So I don't think that's the factor there. I don't see anything that necessarily derives it specifically back to, back to why Florida in particular. I apologize, I'm looking quickly through her cover letter, but I'm not seeing anything that, that raises that. But in response to your question, but for the uncertainty, I probably would have had her in your, in your mix for consideration. But for the uncertainty of whether she can actually physically get the appropriate visas to continue. If that's something you want me to explore and if ultimately she shakes out, I'm more than allowed to have that conversation in greater detail. But given the number of other candidates that I knew didn't have that barrier, I did not ultimately include her.
Yeah. There's plenty of other options. Can you look at Brian Kelly?
We had him in the mix, right? Yeah, let's see.
Oh, we already reviewed him, sorry.
Yeah, he was, he was definitely included. I'll bring up a slide, though, yeah.
I think he was not on that earlier list that we received from, in a word. That's why I asterisked his name, okay. Kevin Sweet?
Kevin is the other one that withdrew, yeah.
All right, that was all I had. Anyone else? All right.
So we're adding Paul and Dax, those the two? I think that's what I heard.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't need to add Ashley unless anyone else.
Yeah, depending on how you want to address that. Dax.
What is, what's ne, what's the next part? Are you gonna?
That's what I'm, I'm gonna walk you through it here in a second. There's Dax Norton, correct?
Can we take like a five-minute break?
Certainly, yeah, and that's fine.
So we'll adjourn for about five minutes and we'll re.
We're gonna give them our scores now. So I said, it's a good sign, that's an attraction of your community. Absolutely.
I don't, are we back? Okay, all right, welcome back, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started again. Could you, I do, before we go into the scoring, I did have one more that I found during the break. Can you pull up Ryan Fabry?
Sure. I don't think I have much on him, but let me see. Okay. Um, alright.
Just his coastal experience kinda.
Yeah, and I went back and forth, mayor, on this candidate as well because I like the North Myrtle Beach. I like the coastal, as you mentioned, as well. Um, so let me unpack it and then we'll talk about him in greater detail. Currently serving as the Assistant City Manager in the city of North Myrtle Beach in South Carolina. Um, in that capacity just since February of 2023, so a little over a year. Um, handles pending legislation, impacts and coordinating local functions, work with legislative delegation. Um, handles public communication, press releases, media advisories, things of that nature. Um, working with local partnerships, leadership and development of large, long and short range plans. And basically guidance with director and departments. Don't get a sense, the way it's structured there, that that person necessarily has oversight of particular departments. Works as kind of a jack of all trades in assisting the city manager overall. Um, prior to that, worked as a project manager with, under a FEMA program with Michael Baker International, a private sector group, subject matter areas on floodplain management, community response strategies, community engagements, resilient action C, so a lot of the work on sea level rises and programs like that. And then worked for a few years as a town administrator for a relatively small community, an island community there, um, from 2015 to 2022, handling the day to day and about, um...
Ollie's Island is actually only a hundred.
That's what I believe, that was one of the reasons that I was a little concerned that, you know, it's a pretty, pretty small operation there. Um, prior to that was the Assistant Town Administrator as well, so pretty, pretty small, pretty small function.
I'm surprised they have an Assistant Town Administrator. Okay.
Oh, that was it, I liked the coastal work in the background as well. I was just worried about scale and scope and things of that nature was why it did not necessarily happen in this list. Okay.
Alright.
Alright. Okay, alright, so as I mentioned at the beginning of this process, the way this is most marks, it's an easy way to identify that score of one, you're definitely interested, two, you might be interested in the candidate, three, you're not interested in the candidate. What I find is we go through this list, it'll quickly get us to kind of where you are as a board and then we can evaluate the scores and see how the numbers fake out from there, so. Um, I've taken them in the order I presented them. I have added the two additional candidates that the mayor had asked us to put in the mix and we'll include them in the voting process as well, so. Um, just take candidate by candidate. If you tell me your numbers, this will self populate and do the math for us, so. We'd like to start with Angela Stone.
Uh, before we do that, can I ask a question about the process here? I know the, I'm glad the directors are here and I assume they've seen all the resumes and had a chance to formulate and I kind of would like to hear something from, I mean, you're, do we have the right thirty-one people here that we're looking at, the list of, from fifty-nine or?
What we did was the senior folks took a look at it. Myself, the two ACMs, the guard director, and Jen. And we kind of lined up who we thought really more, not to influence what you all are doing, but to kind of stay apprised and abreast of what's happening in the process. At this particular point, I think it would be premature for us to weigh in at this, in your selection process.
Okay.
Sufficient?
Sufficient.
Okay.
We did, if I can follow Gary's comment as well, so obviously I mentioned the list you saw was kind of a work in progress as best I could to get it there and I know they looked at their list and combined it. And there were a couple of names that were suggested, either from the board or from the staff and we've incorporated those into the discussions as well. My goal was to give you as broad of a look as possible. Well, at the end of the day, these are your selections, not my selections, our staffs are only gonna be owned by you. I will tell you, we get later in the presentation about what we typically do to make sure that when you get your finalist on board, how we involve staff because most organizations want to have that relationship and get a feedback from staff, not necessarily that they're making the decision. And I will tell you, most of your candidates likewise want to meet your staff because they're making a decision whether this is the right community. So we build a process that gets that involvement, but obviously down to, you know, three to five or so, folks.
Thanks for that information.
Definitely don't want to leave that as a gap for you because that's an important element, absolutely.
Alright, Angela Stone?
Okay, um, and you can give me in whatever order you want, whoever wants to go first, second, third, I can, I'll navigate.
Make it easy for them.
Sure.
Make it for that, in the order that he has up there.
Okay, that's fine, alright. I didn't mean to put you in the spot first and foremost.
Oh, sure. I have a two?
Two?
Deb?
Two.
Two.
One.
One?
Brian Kelly?
One.
Kelly, I have, I say one.
Two.
Two.
Two. Carrie Vargo?
One.
One.
Two.
Three.
One. Chuck Anderson?
One.
I didn't say mine yet.
It was from Great Falls, Minnesota, Montana.
Military background.
I put a one point five, so put a two for me. I couldn't make up, I started right at two and then.
There's always one in the group, right, man?
That was.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my bad. Let me get back here. Thanks for the editing here. Alright, you wanted two?
We'll go with a two, yeah.
Two, gotcha, okay.
I'm sorry, who, I-
Uh, Great Falls, Chuck, Chuck Anderson.
I gave him a one, please.
One, okay.
One.
One.
One. Kurt Fries?
One.
Three.
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 Three. Anna Shoning?
Two.
Three.
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 Three. Jacob Smith?
Two.
Two.
Jacob Smith?
Two.
Three.
Three.
Three. James Slaton?
One.
Three.
One.
One.
One. Jeff Millet?
One.
One.
Two.
Three.
Two. Jeff Schubert?
Three.
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 Three. Joseph Gop?
One.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Three. Kathleen Murray?
Oh, that's the one I missed, I knew I missed one. Um.
You need to bring your slide back up, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Sure you know what we're dealing with here? New York?
Okay, um, two.
Kathleen, two, okay.
One.
We're doing Kathleen Murray, uh-
Kathleen Murray, that's three. Three?
Two.
Three. I'm sorry, what was number? Three. Three, thank you. Ken Griffin?
One.
One.
Three.
Two.
Three. Lawrence McNaul?
Two.
One.
Two.
Two.
Three. Mike, size for a sec?
Two.
Two.
Three.
Three.
Three. Patrick Kaminski?
One.
I'm sorry, one?
Two? Oh, I'm sorry, three.
One.
Two.
Two. Patrick Marsh?
One.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Three. Matt Coleman?
One.
Three.
Two.
Three.
Three. Paul Brake?
One.
One.
Two.
Three.
One. Rob Hilliard?
Two.
I'm sorry, I lost my place. Mr. Hilbert, Hillard?
Hilliard, yes.
One.
Two.
One.
Two.
Scott Moy?
One.
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 Two.
Stanley Hawthorne?
Two.
Three.
Two.
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 Taylor Brown?
One.
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 Three.
One.
Ted Yates?
One.
Three.
One.
Three.
Two.
Andreas, is Bicos?
Two.
Two. Oh, I'm sorry, that one's a one, my bad.
That's a one?
Yes, sir.
Two.
Three.
Three. Tandra Davis?
Two.
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 Three. Aldiel?
Three.
Two.
Two.
Three.
Three.
Two.
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 Three.
Three.
Yeah.
It's a mystery.
Okay, gotcha, alright, okay, so, let me see. So all these folks have a score of two, or one, two or below. So, all these folks have a score of two or one, two or below, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen candidates there. And then after that, you jump into some higher, higher numbers. So, you're kind of in the zone, as I said, this typically gets you down to a reasonable number at that point. So, let me just kind of look and flag some things here, just to raise some discussions.
Also want to, Patrick Kaminski.
There's one, thank you, appreciate that. It's always tough to do this on the fly here, so I can expand this a little better now. Yeah, there's one other one with, uh...
Kevin Griffin.
Kevin Griffin. Or Kenneth Griffin, I guess it is. Is that all the threes we've got? So, um... Realize that everyone will see things in different aspects, that's okay, in the process. What I like to do is just to highlight the fact that obviously there's some differences of thoughts about these candidates. And so, one of the things, we're about to ask these candidates to put a whole lot more skin in the game than, right now, they've done a cover letter and a resume and answered a couple of brief questions as part of the application. We're about to ask them to really put some more emphasis here. And so, I always like to ask the groups when we go through this, saying, even though you may have rated someone at a three at this point, are you comfortable, is there anything there that raises any real red flags that would prevent you from really giving serious consideration if that candidate were to then come before you as a semifinalist and potentially as a finalist? Now, I realize you don't have all their material yet, so this is once again at the high level. So, it's really a question, just to make sure that, because some of the candidates may even be watching this and they're going to see their rankings and they're going to say, hey, you know, do I have a shot at this or not? So, I basically like to ask you as a group, are you okay, realizing that some of you have them rated as a one, others have a three, at this point of the juncture, that you're comfortable to give a fair shake and evaluate their, their material as they see that going forward? Or is there anything there that is just too much of a concern for you, and if so, sometimes helpful to talk about that? Because if that's the case, you know, you're trying to build consensus on a board, obviously, but I always like to raise that as just a question mark, if you're, you're okay proceeding based on what you see here.
Well, I think we've got, how many, how many names there, you said thirteen, or?
Or thirteen, or there's, there should be fourteen, right?
Fourteen, fourteen. If you took, if you did everybody under a two-oh, if you started at the 1.8, that would get rid of most of the threes that we got there. And then you'd leave us with a list of, then, what, eleven? Eleven or so people?
So...
Finalists?
Yes. Here, here would be my suggestion, if you're comfortable with this, this is your process, but let me give you some insight. It is not uncommon to lose a few folks at this stage of the game. They, they, they may be involved, I, I don't know if there are another searches, I will know that going further. I know a couple of these, I'm certainly aware, because I've seen their applications elsewhere, but some of these folks may very well drop out. And so, I, I'm okay with the size of the number you've got now, if you're okay with it, because you're likely to lose, you know, one or two or three of these folks anyways. And if you get down to ten, all of a sudden, you're down to seven or something like that, you can really back yourself into a corner, and then all of a sudden, you really are hamstrung at that decision. So, as I say, right now, it's, it's harder to say, it's probably easier to say, I'm willing to give a fair shake to all these folks, because I don't know enough about them, but I'm going to know more at the next level. The next level, you'll make that distinction of saying, now I've seen the detail, yes or no, I'm really not ready to go there. And we'll go through this type of process with your, your semifinal, your semifinalists to get to your finalists, and that's where it really becomes critical, because now you're about to ask them to come up for an interview, and they want to make sure, if I'm coming in, I want to make sure I'm, I'm on board, that I can be fairly considered. So, my commissioner, my, my recommendation was, I, I get where you're coming from, but I would be concerned about taking that many off, because you might end up being, you know, in a hole pretty quickly.
Well, and I'd also like to, I mean, there's not that many there, so I think it might be worth each person, if you ranked at a three, pretty strongly feel about that. So, I didn't have, I don't have any reasoning for why you did that. A major that didn't jump out to me that might have been concerning.
I had one three in the group, and I, the notes I had written, uh, under that person was that too much movement from job to job, no city manager experience. Were the notes that I had written along there for, for, uh, for Ken Griffin. So, nothing horrible or anything, just, just a lot of, not a history of keeping the same job for long periods of time.
Would it be fair to do that exercise, like, for each candidate moving down?
Absolutely, if you want to take that, so, how about we just, well, I know we started there, why don't we just take it in the order of coming down list?
Yeah.
James Slaton.
As Commissioner Toth, you had him rated a three.
Yes, just a second, I want to find my notes. There was a reason for that.
Do we really have to go through and say why we're blacking somebody out?
My, well, process at the end, I, if, if...
You don't have to, I just, for my curiosity, I...
Because I'm just more negative than most.
Well, and like, like he said, Doug said, they may be watching, so if it's not something you're comfortable saying, that's perfectly fine, I just like to hear multiple perspectives. I mean, this is a serious decision we're making.
My concern with him is his issue with the police, it's not very, I'd say, sorry. My concern is the issue that he's having currently with the police department, or within, recently within the last...
Couple, there was some, there was an issue there about leaving and not leaving, yeah, I'm aware of that. And our media, next, I've watched that as well. It sounds like it's been resolved largely, but I understand the nature of what you're raising, Commissioner.
Yes, that was my concern with that, and we have a great police force, and I really don't want to see, you know, any issues with that. And, and who was the other one I gave a three to, I'm sorry?
What we're gonna, so, Taylor Brown, that was Commissioner Doctor. Anything to add? Okay, um, Carrie Vargo, Commissioner Doctor. Do you want to say anything about any of them?
For the part, it was, uh, the time they had in the current job that was equivalent of this job was part of it. And then, and how often they move, and there were a lot, except moved every year, two years, three years.
Alright, um, then also to Patrick Kaminski, Commissioner Toth.
To do with the suspension, resignation, and all of that go. Just have concerns with it, and brought up the flags.
Yeah, I, I, and, and one of, to that, as I said, some of these candidates are going to have some of that. I've, I've got some background on him, as far as some community support, and what the business and the other communities have, so there'll be another side of the story, and that, that's the nature of the approach, you know?
That's, that was the only two that...
Yep, understood.
Had flags on, thank you.
Outdoor, I know, tends to be a... It's an older community, I think, I know a few of the commissioners from their city, like an older school line of thinking. Would you say that he is, has like a fresh perspective, a progressive?
If, if you saw the material, if you get a chance to delve in, he included in his background material about some of the initiatives and challenges and issues he dealt with during his window of time there. Through, initially got a very strong review, and then, as they were dealing with a variety of the capital projects and some internal challenges with some employment concerns internal to the organization, that's when things happened, but the big issue was the transition on, with his, with his board, as I recall, specifically the mayor, that ultimately kind of snagged and unraveled. But I, I have seen, and I've spoken to him, and I've also seen a variety of material coming out of that process, from a lot of community support and what he was trying to accomplish in the midst of that. So, I think there'll, there'll be another side of the story to, to unpack there.
Okay. Commissioner Dickey already spoke to Ken Minning, anything to add?
Yeah, I...
Commissioner Dickey spoke to him earlier, but anything to add?
No, I just have, uh, he's got good public works and utility experience, is a good engineer, but not much manag, management experience.
Yeah, his, his probably largest function was the position at Hillsborough County, when he did infrastructure and programs.
Okay, Lawrence.
I do know his attraction is to get back to Florida and ultimately wants to stay here. As I said, he's kept his property here. Tried to recruit him for another position for a very comparable title position, another position, but it was in the other side of the state, so, he decided he didn't want to take that one.
Okay, Lawrence McNaul. Anything to add, Commissioner Minning?
Uh, Lawrence, I have, um, good education, not much experience.
And Ted Yates, Commissioner Toth.
Ted Yates.
Ted was the previous manager of Isla Marada, and then was the mayor up in Twinsburg, Ohio, was the candidate.
Correct, he was, um, pretty much an elect, had a non-renewal with Isla Marada, very short term.
And there's more, there's more to the story than what you might see in, in there as well, there's, in fact, this week, we're probably just going to see some more information about some reporting that's being challenged about some of the stuff that's occurring in his name, so, stay tuned on that one.
He's challenging, or they are?
No, the, um, the development, no development type debate taking place there. He was trying to bridge the gap, has a lot of community support during that process. They've gone through a couple managers, and there, another community has gone through a variety of managers there. Group that was kind of opposed to him has raised some issues of concern, and that's now being challenged by him. And counter, there's another story coming out, if you follow some of the recent, literally anytime this week or by Monday, there's going to be a counter story from a different paper saying what's been reported isn't accurate. So, there's, there's, as I say, it's a, it's a point in time, we realize, many of these candidates have stories that are in play. I think he's a strong candidate, he also will probably be a little more expensive than some of your other candidates, but we'll ask them, we always have that conversation with the candidates as part of the effort in terms of his expertise. He's a, he's got land use experience, an attorney, and, um, so his compensation's desired to be a little bit higher than others, but that's all part of the negotiation process. I've had a, a series of conversations with him and a couple of searches of recent, so I probably know a little bit more than what's out there publicly now, but I know there's more coming publicly that I think might cast a different set of circumstances on him.
Okay, um, so, back to Doug's original question was, for those of you who did put threes for these, is there anyone that you feel like very strongly about that you would really want them to continue? That you wouldn't be interested in hearing more from?
No, I just put the threes because of the reasoning behind the research I did on the resumes, and, that's it.
Okay.
Okay. Good, if you're, if you're comfortable, that's, 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 I'm comfortable with that size of the list. Let me, let me shift back to the PowerPoint here and talk a little bit about kind of what's next. Thinking about. So, um, what we'll do is, we will, I will reach out and talk to all these candidates, notify them that they have been selected as a semifinalist in the position. We normally give them about twenty-four to forty-eight hours to confirm their continued interest in the position, so I'll know pretty quickly whether they're in or out, so to speak. Our process will involve a fairly detailed list of questions, we call it our pre-interview questionnaire, it'll be about their background, their skill set, why they left their previous positions, if they were in any short-term positions, what drove them to that issue. So, we're going to learn more about those transitions that we've talked about, whether they're promotional opportunities or whatever that looked and felt like.
Make sure your microphone's close.
Sorry, I'll go back in here. So, we're going to ask them about their transitions in different positions. We're going to be asking about much more of their management style, we're going to be focusing on a number of the items that we raised, capital project management, resiliency issues, things that were in your brochure that are very unique to your community. Strategic planning, performance management, things like that, succession planning. So, we're going to want to get a sense of their background and how they, their experience and their training would help them address those issues, so you can get a better feel for whether they've got a lot to, to bring to the table on those items or not necessarily as much. And, and they'll all have different responses to those issues. We're going to get into their relationships and community engagement processes, how they work with you as elected officials, how they work with their staff, their, their, their kind of overall management philosophies as well. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to ask them to, to tell us anything in their background that as a future employer is likely to raise a question or concern or controversy. So, you're going to have them explain in their own words, kind of those circumstances. And we're also going to ask them, uh, general compensation and benefit package issues that they would like if they were ultimately selected for discussion for purposes of negotiation. We will certainly also ask them if there's any challenges or concerns that if they were offered the position, that might be a factor of concern for you. Relocation, housing, things like that, timing of acceptance of a position, we may have kids in school, things of those nature that may come into play. We also ask how quickly they could start, if they were ultimately appointed, we'll know when the interview dates are going to be, and we'll go from there. So, we're going to get a lot of that type of background material with them. Then, as I mentioned, we'll do, in addition to those candidates providing background information, I'm going to be, we'll initiate what's called a stage one media search, a LexisNexis database search, so we'll start to get some media coverage beyond the basic Googling that I've done at this stage of the game. And we will ask them to participate in typically four prerecorded questions about why they're interested in the position, some of their most complex projects, things that maybe aren't on their resume that they would like to share, that we'd like to know about them as a person, things like that. Those are timed and recorded, so you'll get a chance to see how they communicate and, and communicate their information in a visual fashion. We give the candidates a chance to do that work, we bundle that all material up, we shoot that all to you, and then you've got some homework to do. At that point, you'll be able to review their cover letters, questionnaires, resumes, video interviews. I will be doing the same, I'm talking to all these candidates in much greater detail at that point, unpacking things as you're recruited, questions that I might have on them as well. And then we'll be back, meeting with you to review that, and I joke, it's a lot like being on Survivor, you're going to be voted on or off the island at that point. And there are going to be a couple you all love and a couple you don't love, and we spend a lot of time with the folks in the middle to try to help you get to a process of three to five folks that you'd like to bring on. So, that's the next thing that will happen, then we'll release all the other folks that are not progressing in the search.
And that's May fifteenth at 6:00 PM, correct?
Uh, yes, I can go to the next slide here if you need, I'll come back to that. Yes, the, um, I can't read on my screen, but, uh, yes, we're scheduled on May fifteenth or sixteenth, I, I can't see it from here, Mayor.
Fifteenth, fifteen.
And that'll be an opportunity, so, from the time, we'll let the candidates complete that work, we'll bundle it up, we'll get it to you, you have some time to review it, that'll be your homework, then we'll be back doing this type of session again, and we'll basically have a conversation about these candidates, and then rank these candidates, and your goal of trying to get those to three to five folks.
Okay, so we'll have from May second until May fifteenth to review all of that?
Yes, we are probably May third, uh, either May second or May third, we anticipate getting that to you. I always have a slip date in there, because inevitably somebody runs into a technology problem, or there's an issue, and, you know, we'll, we'll package what we got, so that you get plenty of time, but you got some time to deal with that, so you got a, a better part of a, a two weeks there to, to work through it. I want to go back to the previous slide, just to give you a sense, so, I just want you to be thinking about what we're going to be doing with your finalist. I don't need decisions, but react to it. Those folks, we will do, once you've determined your finalist, we will do background reference, criminal history, credit, and a, and a full-blown stage two media search, where they worked as adult, what people that check all the search engines, all the papers, all the media, all the social media stuff, and we'll prepare that as a, a material for you, we know that that will be a factor of consideration. We typically ask our finalists to also do an additional exercise, or potentially two exercises. One is called the first-year game plan, and it's a written exercise, so if they're appointed as your next manager, how are they going to approach the job? What are the things they're going to do in their first thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, one hundred and eighty days, and kind of the balance of that first year? And you may think everybody will do that the same, I've seen thousands of them, it gives you some normative insights about just how people get their head around what they're about to step into, and that'll give you some additional insights about their, their, their exposure and their background. Many times are, we have an optional service, if you're interested in a personality, a DISC assessment, many people are familiar with that, we often do those, and you can, you'll see each candidate, and you'll see them as a group, so you'll be able to compare kind of how they look, and that's informative when you're interviewing, and that's an optional service if you'd like to.
I would love to see that.
Okay, okay. And then, typically, for our city manager positions, the nature of this position requires a lot of public presentations, and so we often normally ask them to do a presentation like a TED Talk, no more than ten minutes, it's meant to be short. It can be about their first-year game plan, it can be about challenges and opportunities, it can be about whatever topic, we just need to figure out what that wants to be. And we normally have that as part of the process for your interview with you as a public body, because your manager is going to make a lot of these presentations. And I'm interested, and you're probably interested, in how concise, how tight, how do they make a presentation, how do they relate to information and relate to you and relate to an audience? And so, we often incorporate that, that's an optional service, we can figure out what that looks and feels like, but you might want to give some thought about that as well. And so, their work is, continues, even after they're done with semifinalists, they've got some more work to go through to get ready for this position. The onsite interview process that we've been discussing with Jessica and your team, most of ours are two-day processes, and I think those are the dates that we've landed here with all your schedules as well. So, the first one is June nineteenth, and the second is June twentieth. We typically want to have the community, uh, the, the candidates get out and be, get tours of your community, just as I did, to see your projects and your initiatives, and what this place all looks like, and what the ebb and flow feels like. And we, as I mentioned earlier, we always invite, your, your candidate's going to meet your staff, your staff's going to meet your candidate, so, we'll help facilitate a session where they'll have a, a group meeting that'll feel a little like a staff meeting, but a little bit like an interview, and I'll help them prepare questions, and I'll watch how the candidates are relating to your staff, and how your staff's relating to the candidates, and be able to kind of capture that information. In Florida, because of the nature of this process, ninety-nine point nine percent of our searches, commissioners like to do one-on-ones. So, we'll have a session where you'll do a round robin with each of the candidates, and we'll just play musical chairs and work your way through that process, so you can have a chance to have those questions individually. And then normally, and I think we've scheduled here as well, what we call a public meet and greet. Normally, what happens, you schedule this in a community center, in a room that can accommodate a crowd, uh, we encourage you to invite the public, and invite your stakeholders, invite your boards and commissioners, whoever, whoever you feel is appropriate that's going to want to interface with your manager candidates. The mayor normally opens that up and welcomes people, turns it over to me, I'll talk about how we got to this point, we'll work with your staff to develop a bio, sheets and pictures and all that. And then, we encourage them to all just take a part of the room, and your crowd will work around the room, and we'd like you as elected officials to be there, because you will get feedback from your constituents about their thoughts and opinions about the candidates. As a, it's one part of the process I can't control, because I have no idea who's going to show up, but I'm actually, from a candidate standpoint, it's helpful, because they, these are the people they're going to interact with, and I want to see how they relate to your constituents, and how your constituents are relating to them, and, you know, kind of how their presence are in that regard. The second day is a big day, we try to pack all that kind of information together on day one, so that the second day, you can be focused for a series of, of a board meeting, interview, or public meetings with your candidates. Most of the time, those sessions go for a scheduled ninety minutes, that gives you about sixty minutes for a traditional interview, if you do a PowerPoint, about ten minutes for that, and that gives you enough time for some Q and A in between. Every community I work with, when they said, I don't want to do ninety minutes, want to do sixty minutes, they always run to ninety minutes, I just tell you, it's just, it's, this is important decisions, most important decision you make as a, as a body. And most of the time, you're going to want a little more time with these folks, even though you've kind of seen them, but it'll give you a sense of them. So, that's ninety minutes over the course of the day, and if you've got five candidates, that'll, that'll run you through the day. And, uh, if you're not physically or emotionally taxed at that point, uh, we often will have a chance to deliberate. Some communities like to say, hey, it's been a long two days, I just need time to process, and they want to come back the next morning, or a day later, or some other time to recap. We do try to get you to a conclusion as quickly as possible, because many of these candidates may be in other searches, and if you delay too long, you may find that another community has hired them to go there. So, we do try to get you to a decision-making. We'll have all your decisions and ready, references, background, all that work will be done, so you'll be in a position, if you're ready to, to engage in a conversation on deliberations of an unemployment offer, you'll have the information to start, and we're here to help you through that process. We'll negotiate with you on your behalf, with however you want, and then have it memorialized with your, your attorney going forward. I don't need decisions on all those items, but I just want you to be thinking about what's coming next, because the next meeting, I'm going to try to drill down and make sure we got those things in place, so, all makes sense?
Yeah, would it be possible to do the DISC assessments for the, all of the semifinalists?
You can, there's a cost with it, it's like a hundred and fifty bucks, so that's why we normally wait till you get to your finalist on that area. Once again, it's kind of like that triage that I mentioned, Mayor, about your, you want to spend your time and energy on the folks that you're ultimately going to be most deeply concerned about. So, I don't think I've ever seen it done at the semifinalist level, but the finalist certainly, many of our communities do it.
I use that very, we're heavily use DISC in my professional work, so, I find it valuable, but I understand that that's a, a big cost, so, I'm good with waiting.
I have a question, how does the feedback to the commission?
Sure, great question, um, so, as I, I sit down in those sessions, I'm watching them, and then I will ask them to unpack at a very high level... unpack at a very high level, basically three questions. One, what did you see in their background, your interactions with them and your interview with them that resonated with you? And we'll just kind of capture all that thought at a high level. The second question is, what did you see in their background, their interactions that raised questions or concerns, that might require some additional insight or review? The third is, based on your interactions and the response to questions, was there anything that you feel that might be a question that requires a little more insight, that perhaps you as elected officials during your second day might want to ask about? And that may be different from one candidate to another, based on the way they respond to a question or something like that. I'll debrief with your staff and I'll put that at a very high level, I won't say who said what, where and how, because this is your decision, but they, you know, they clearly, you want the candidate to click with you, you want them to click with your community, you want them to click with your staff, and so that's part of the staff component, and I'll provide that at a high level and have that available for you before you're sitting down in your second day. After the day one, I'll be able to capture all those notes. Same sort of thing, I'm watching the candidates throughout the whole process, including the meet and greets and things of that nature and getting, just seeing how they relate and react to. So, I'll add any other insights as your recruiter and advisor in this that might be helpful and I'll capture those in the notes. But the goal is to have all that done after day one, you'll have that before your formal sessions on day two, so that you'll be able to maybe unpack things differently with different candidates based on that feedback.
Thank you. So, a little, it's nuanced, but preparing it the evening of June 19th, I assume after our, or during our one-on-ones and the public, or you'll be there for the public meet and greet. So, just logistically, like when would we have that?
Either-
And are we going to, if we don't have time to review it ahead of time, will that be something through with us in the meeting?
A little both on that, Mayor. Depending on when we get out of there and how exhausted we all are, I typically work that late, that night, pretty late, capturing all those thoughts and a point. Sometimes I can email those, but those might be hitting you late as well. So, normally what will happen, if I, if I can get it done early enough, I get it out and I get an email to everybody. If not, I will definitely have available hard copies and we can talk through that. The first part of the meeting on that second day is getting you prepared for the interviews. So, there'll be some things that you'll get in preparation, you'll have all that material ahead of you, and I'll have proposed sample questions and things of that nature to get you through the interview, but there'll be an opportunity for you to also help prioritize those questions and potentially add other questions. And so, for that first kind of 45 minutes or so in the morning before you start your first interview is us to kind of go through all that, including any of the feedback.
Okay.
It's a busy couple of days.
So, day one, or day two is like an all-day meeting in here?
That, yeah, yes, yeah. You'll, you'll-
For us.
As I said, the good news is you've got outstanding, if you, if you need a break, you can look outside and enjoy the, enjoy the scenery, but yes, day two is a long day, especially if you've got five interviews.
And day one, are we involved in the community tours or are you, is-
We do it differently.
What time would we be looking at?
So, typically, many times I try to, and I think in working with your HR director, most of the time, we do our, our one-on-ones in the morning, and then we get the commissioners in in the morning and then they're done, and then sometimes there's a break for lunch and they may be able to mingle with the candidates as well as part of that, and then you're not needed again until the evening before your meet and greet that takes place. I think the way they've discussed it here with some feedback, that maybe you're trying to do the one-on-ones right before you do the meet and greet. So, I think that's where we're leading, but we're going to kind of fine-tune that schedule in talking with Jessica.
Okay.
So, at that point, then you're free in the morning, basically it would just be towards the afternoon during the round robin of the one-on-ones, and then you'll be expected probably to attend the public meet and greet with the candidates.
And is the community tour something they go on, like will we put them on a city bus all together and someone's leading, one person's leading the tour, small groups?
What we'll do is break them up, we've got a, a couple of senior staff designated, depending upon how many candidates. Usually, we've tried to pair two department heads per candidate, and they'll take them around, give them a tour of the city, talk about all the facilities, talk about what's happening, and then also provide an opportunity for the candidates to ask them questions about the organization and those kind of things. And then it, it's really more of an orientation for them, candidates, than an opportunity. You know, we'll also get feedback from the staff members on the, on the individual tours as well.
Okay.
And if you have capacity to do it individually, we prefer it that way. I will tell you both as a candidate, but also as a recruiter, when you're put on a bus and you've got four other candidates, you know, the level of dialogue and conversation is the same as if you're getting some detailed individuals, and we sit down and talk with those tour guides about reactions that they may have as well. So, it's another part of that. Our goal is to really just do a 360 evaluation of these folks while they're onsite. We try to put all that stuff on day one because you're likely to talk about a project or an issue, if they haven't seen it, they may not fully comprehend it, so that's why we try to pack that all into the first day.
Okay.
And that's all I have for you. I know it's been a little longer of a process, but hopefully you've been able to get a flavor of what this looks and feels like, and I know, as I said, this is the most important decision you do as elected officials is hiring your manager, so we want to make sure you're comfortable, that you know your candidates, and, and we certainly are pleased to continue this process as we go on the next step, as your semifinalists continue their work.
All right, well, thank you very much. Sorry, I already closed my laptop. All right, well, that concludes, thank you all, for everyone who's watching at home. I know our residents are very engaged in this process and we invite you to continue to be engaged. Please send us any feedback that you may have, you're welcome to email your mayors and commissioners, to let us know what you think, we're curious to hear. With that said, we'll adjourn.
Just have one question, sorry about that, because I want to get out of here too. But will residents have an opportunity to review the resumes or not?
They're in the meeting packet.
Your public records.
And different, to your point, Commissioner, sometimes, different organizations do it differently, especially with the finalists, sometimes they put all their stuff together, others don't do it, it's really your call, we'll help you facilitate whatever you need to accommodate your desires here.
Yeah, if we, I think it would be good if we could have a, the packet narrow it down to just these candidates and have that posted on our city manager search page, the, the cover letters and resumes of just those, that would be great.
That was, that was, well, we'd-
Like as soon as possible.
We were just too many, and once you guys got it narrowed down to, to the semifinalists, then we thought it would be appropriate to post.
So, here's, here's what I would suggest you do on this, I probably, obviously it would be late tonight by the time I get back, but I'll be notifying these candidates probably by tomorrow. I normally give them 48 hours to look at their email, respond that they're in, but by first part of next week, I would have, you know, all, all 14 are in, or, you know, if somebody drops out or something like that, I'll just coordinate with whoever's left at that window, but I'll, I'll certainly make sure if we lose some candidates, you're aware of who they might be. But you can certainly get that, if Monday works out for you, I think that'll be fine.
And can we get a copy of this as well?
Certainly, yep, yep, we can do that. This as well as the schedules or whatever, whatever you need, Mayor, just coordinate,